Good evening. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting of Monday, April 15, 2019. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please. Okay. Albertson?
Here.
Bueller?
Here.
Danforth?
Here.
Lalum?
Here.
Manti?
Here.
Roby?
Here.
Solom?
Here.
Thorson?
Here.
Vilhauer?
Here.
Wy?
Present.
Thank you. Full house. All right. The first item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. And I'm going to move items 16 and 17, which have to do with the Lake Campesca Trail Project, to the consent agenda because those were discussed pretty thoroughly in the Public Works Committee meeting. So with that change, look for a motion and second for approval. Move by Albertson, second by Bueller. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Here.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. We've gotten better. We've gotten better at that.
Loops.
Okay, the second item on the agenda is the public input time. And this is the time reserved for anyone who would like to make a public comment. To come forward and do so, please state your name into the microphone before making your comment. And if your comment is related to an agenda item, please wait until that agenda item is taken up by the council. Otherwise, you're free to speak, so. Thank you.
My name is Robyn Stoltman, and I live at, well, I live right next door to Cloud Nine Bar and Casino. My issue is, is that they have their music extremely loud. It vibrates the windows in the house, and we can hear it. And that's including having TV on or music on in our house to be able to try to get rid of the noise on our end. I'm asking that there's some sort of agreement that has to get made. Either the bar closes down, they have their music where they have it no longer after 10 o'clock at night, or they need to buy the property because it's ridiculous. There's grown men that pull down their pants to pee outside, day or night, it does not matter. And I don't need to hear it, neither does my two-year-old or my 14-month-old. And my two-year-old has very high sensory needs. He's not old enough to get tested for autism, but it does bug him. And being a mother, and I am due in July this year, I know what newborns are like, and I do not want to deal with it. So I am being proactive by asking someone to please do something because I have called the cops, and the cops have stated to me that they cannot do anything about any of it. And that you guys are in charge, so I'm asking for help.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? All right, seen none. I will close the public comment period and move to item three, which is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion, second for approval? Move by Vilhauer, second by Wy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item four is announcement of the 2019 Spring Litter Blitz. And I see Barb Brinkman is here to talk about this, so Barb, you have the floor.
Hi. Push. Push where it says push, okay. I'm Barb Brinkman, and I am glad to be back again this year with the 2019 Spring Litter Blitz. It feels a little like a April Fool's joke, but it will, it'll come. Do we have slides? Yep. Okay. We're starting it today and running it through May 1st, and we will work with Mother Nature to see if she likes those dates or not. Sign up, this is a little bit here, different. Sign up is what you see, but then add forward slash, right up here, add forward slash Spring Litter Blitz. Okay. And it will be available, I'm going to say tomorrow morning. Go for it. So you go to the, yeah, W H T T P S colon forward slash, forward slash, W W W dot Watertown S D dot U S, forward slash Spring Litter Blitz. And this is the signup form, how about that? That you just enter the information, look at the map or the zones. There's a list of all the zones that are listed available, and you choose on the one you want. And then that pulls it out of that form, so nobody else can, can choose that zone, too. Hopefully that works that nice and smoothly that way. You can then print out the instructions, have them reviewed with your group. There is, and then do the cleanup. There is a site on Arrow Avenue that our street department will be setting up, and, let's go back a minute, to give, you know, you leave your trash and the recyclables. So we're kind of sorting those out. And then leave the unused supplies there, like the vests and the other bags and reachers that you have gotten at the Watertown Community Foundation Center. The directions are so. And then fill it, go back on the website and do the feedback. That will enter you into a drawing in May for 100 Watertown bucks. So we're still very thankful for the chamber to do that. So we pick up supplies, again reviewing, pick up supplies at the Watertown Community Foundation office. And if they are not open, phone number is there. They're just closed on Good Friday afternoon and, and Friday, Thursday and Friday of their big event. And some excitement has always been had. There's always interesting things to find. This is the return site. Thanks to our street department. Lots and lots of people work to get this going. And so we appreciate all of the groups that faithfully sign up year after year. We encourage new groups to do this. Take photos of your group, send them to the phone number. We'll use them in the Litter Blitz reporting and publicity. And the feedback is important to help us plan and how we can better serve the city. So we'll figure out what meeting in May we'll have, the drawing. And thank you for the time, and thank you for your cooperation and participation.
Well, thank you for all your work, Barb. We appreciate it. And this really is a fun way to get involved in the community and, and spiff things up. And there's a lot that appears when the snow melts.
Yes.
So cleanup is needed. Glenn?
I just like to put a, you heard me put a plug in a couple of weeks ago, but I really would like to put a plug in again. And we've got dozens, about hundreds of groups out there that can take part in this, and everybody does a little bit of their own share of picking up. It makes such a difference within the community. So really ask for community support in getting the job done against this, again this spring. I believe you're going to be, there's going to be some plugs made on some media outlets here coming up in the near future.
Yes.
So anyway, really let the community, let's get behind this again.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks, Barb. All right. Item number five is authorization for the finance officer to issue special checks to BNSF Railway for $750 for a pipeline license and $1,899 for railroad protective liability insurance for the Highway 212 construction project. So look for a motion, second for approval. Move by Roby and second by Lalum. And Heath, would you please?
One for the license, that allows us to place that sanitary sewer pipe further out into their property. And then two for required railroad protective liability insurance coverage that lasts through the duration of the project. Essentially, the coverage lasts for a full year. Through Matt and Chris, and we've confirmed our current liability coverages do not cover what the railroad requires us to cover for working on their property. So we elected to go ahead and purchase their insurance that they offer on this annual basis.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments? None? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Wow, Brad, we can hear you. You're right on. It's not better than last.
I'm answering a little early.
Yeah. Just in case. Yeah, that works. Okay, item number six is approval of alcohol consumption at Bramble Park Zoo on May 21st, 2019, for the LATI Cat Think Big Conference participants. So look for a motion, second for approval. Move by Bueller.
Second.
Second by Wy. And Matt, would you please explain this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I don't see anybody from the zoo here, so.
Oh, we do. Jamie's here.
Oh, Jamie is here. Sorry. Didn't see you back there.
Lost in the crowd.
Well, real quick, before she speaks, state statute does require the governing body to approve the consumption of alcohol on, on public grounds and public facilities. This is not the sale, it's just the consumption at an event that Jamie will describe.
So I'm not sure I'm the expert on this event. Chris Fie from LATI was the one that approached us. There will be about 80 gentlemen here from all over that are part of the Think Big program, and they'll be having a conference here. It'll be after zoo hours, the zoo will be closed. Hopefully, it's nice weather. We'll be out in our shelter and have a grill out, and they're just going to provide some wine and beer for the gentlemen, and they can walk around the zoo and just visit and mingle. If it's not nice, we'll be inside in the Terry Redland Environmental Center, and then they'll just kind of grill out and bring the food in. But like I said, after hours, just for those participants, all adults 21 and over.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Jamie Stricker or Councilman Vilhauer?
Matt, as I recall, didn't we used to have to go through a zoning change temporarily for something like, we don't have to go through that anymore, or am I thinking of something else, or?
So we did actually make that change to our ordinance that no longer requires that, those convoluted steps. But this is actually different because this is just the consumption and not the sale.
Okay.
Good question. Councilman Roby?
Due to potential conflict of interest, I'll be recusing myself from this item as well as item seven. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Councilman Lalum?
What, this conference, what are they doing? I mean, what's the Thing Big Conference, besides drinking?
I believe, and if anybody knows more, Think Big is the cat program where they take classes here at Lake Area, and then they employ them through Caterpillar.
Caterpillar, not, not like meow, meow, cat?
Yes.
All right, got it.
No, so it's the Caterpillar, I think it's like a 3-2 program that they do. And then these are instructors from all over that will be coming here for the conference.
I didn't know if it was something with the zoo when you were on the cat program or something.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 no. They're just using our facility.
Just a coincidence that we have big cats.
Right.
Yeah.
No, I believe last time I talked to Chris, they're doing an evening at the Redland Center, an evening at the zoo, just trying to get the people around our community to see what we have.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number seven is approval of resolution number 19-17, resetting the on-sale alcoholic beverage license fee for full-service restaurants. And since there is no number in that blank, I'll do some discussion first, that acceptable, Matt. And then we'll have to remember to get a motion, a specific motion later. And I can see there are quite a few people in the audience, and I believe many are here for this discussion on resetting the on-sale license fee for full-service restaurants. In order to allow time for all views to be heard, please try to limit your comment to three minutes or less, and try not to repeat what has already been stated unless it's necessary in order for you to clarify your point. And I have received literally dozens and dozens of comments on this through email and social media and text. And I think it boils down essentially to what is the goal or purpose of the city in setting this? And if we are primarily looking to protect the existing license holders of the full license that's unrestricted, is that the council's responsibility to maintain the private business asset market value? Or is the council responsible for providing the paths needed to promote economic development and new business opportunities in Watertown? And then also, what precedent are we setting with a council action designed solely to protect the market value of an established business assets with regard to other businesses? And if the council acts to protect the existing bar licenses at the expense of creating a market favorable to a new business development, what other businesses could be expect to request similar treatment with regard to their assets? And this is, you know, a situation that we didn't create this problem, and I don't think any of these council members enjoy having to make this call on this. It's a very difficult thing for them to do. And, and it is, I've, I've had people saying, "You've got to protect me," on one hand, and I've got people saying, "You've got to provide opportunities for people to get into the market." And we do not have a free-market situation, not because of anything this council has done, but really more what our state has done. And, but here we are. Our 10 years have passed, and we have a resolution which was meant to last 10 years, and it's now expired, and the council should take some sort of action. And after, do you want to say something, Matt, in addition to that, before I start taking comments?
Mayor, thank you. I would just add, just as a reminder to those watching, that this was postponed from the previous meeting.
Yes, thank you.
And that the, the previous meeting had the number of $100,000 in the resolution. And that's been removed, so in order to foster discussion. And so any motion that is ultimately made should include a number, whether that's 205 to keep it as it currently is, or some other number. We should have a new motion, a new active resolution on the books. I think you kind of, you covered it as far as the history, the 10 years and that sort of thing, so.
Right. And this new resolution won't necessarily last for any defined period of time. It, it lasts until we change it. Yes. Councilman Solom?
I just want to make a note, I'll be recusing myself from this item.
Thank you. Councilman Vilhauer?
I just like to make a comment to the, the public. I, I saw some comments directed towards the mayor and, and the council that, to the effect that we were trying to push something through without proper notification, et cetera. I want to ensure that that is absolutely not the, the case. This is the, what, third or fourth, fourth meeting, Matt puts his fingers up, that this has, has been an item of discussion. And yes, two weeks ago, when we had a motion on the floor, it, it was moved to be postponed until tonight. But at no point along the line were we trying to, you know, pu- push this through. That is not the case, but, but I have seen those comments out there, and I just want to address those because I, that is not the case, so thank you.
We value every single business that's here in this town, and we thank you. We know it's not easy to run a restaurant in this town. It's hard to find help, and it is, it, this is a big issue. It's not, a lot of times, a, a high-profit sort of business to have. And I just want to acknowledge that upfront, and regardless of the action that the council takes, I know they understand that, too. And so they, they really don't have an agenda against or for, or they're just trying to do the right thing for our community. And so that being said, is there anyone who would like to speak? Please come forward and say your name into the microphone for the record before you speak.
Roger Meyer, owner of Foxy's.
I don't think the mic's on.
Owner of Foxy's, Roger Meyer. Your comment that you made that you weren't doing this under the table or kind of shy or anything, I don't agree with that because I had notifications two hours from one of your council members about this, two weeks ago, saying that this was going to be voted on. And I had two hours to think about it that day, and I was somewhat emotional, I think, when I spoke last time. And I've had two weeks to sleep on it, think about it, and actually go to talk to, I think, 25 out of the 27 liquor license owners and their concerns, which I think all their concerns were, they didn't even know this was happening. Almost none of them knew what was going on. So the transparency that you talk about was not there, and it is not there. And this decision to lower our value of our liquor licenses is a bad idea. I know it's your job to make ideas, the mayor has to make ideas, but I think as a citizen, it's our right to come up and say, "This is a bad idea." I've been in the business many, many years. I probably have my liquor license almost paid for. And I get different beliefs of what people pay for these liquor licenses, and I spoke to everyone behind me. And they range from 150 to 235 to this and that. And I think we've all agreed that 205 is the proper number. And many of these people, I think there's new owners, I have a nephew sitting to my left that just bought a business, went to the bank. The bank borrowed him money, and that license being worth $205,000. What is going to happen to those people? When you devalue that license to whatever number you guys think it is this day, it was 100,000 two weeks ago, now there is no number. And who's going to make the number? The industry makes the number. The supply, the demand, the leaving of restaurants, the coming of restaurants. And that is how the value are set on a liquor license. Like the mayor said, this is a difficult, difficult business that we're in right now. And all of us are having the problem to staff our places and to keep them open. And what you are presenting is just going to split up the market of our cooks, our dishwashers, our bartenders, our servers, and we can't staff them now. I get that same feeling from everyone that owns a business behind me, that we do not have enough staff to run our businesses. And what you're proposing will not help that situation. And I think it will be harmful for the industry. And I think it will be harmful long after you're not in office or anyone else is in office in the city of Watertown. This is going to go down, many years down the road, and it's going to be harmful. Almost 25 out of the 27 licenses are mom-and-pop organizations. We buy our cars here, we buy our carpet here, we buy our paint here, we buy everything here. The resolution you're proposing will bring franchises here. I wonder where the profits go from those of Buffalo Wild Wings and Applebee's? Where do those owners buy their cars and trucks? It's not in the city of Watertown. We're a small pop-and-cop community. We need to protect each other, and that is what we do. We're 22,000 people, and we're trying to offer things that we're not population smart-wise yet. And that is the only comment, I'm not going to go on here. Those are my feelings, is this is a bad, bad idea. And it will be bad for the industry, not just the restaurants, not just the bars. It's going to be bad for the Wheel Inn and all the other restaurants. We have two or three new restaurants coming right at this present time. We have North Shore building, looks like he's going to put about a million in it. Off the Waverly exit, I see someone building a very nice building that's going to be an event center. We have the gas that have hundreds and thousands, maybe millions invested into it, and they're going to try to open. So we have new businesses, and we've had many close the last year or two. And that is what the industry is about. And we do need to direct our attention on population growth, and this of offering more liquor licenses is going to hurt not just the liquor and bar industry, it's going to hurt the industry of restaurants and everyone through the city of Watertown. I thank you for your time, and that's just my feelings and comments. And I've had two weeks of very uneasiness. And the most time I've owned a liquor license in 30 years in the city of restaurant. It feels like the city of Watertown is pulling the sheets out from under me. I had to sit in front of the council members to be approved twice for a liquor license, and it's now it's like, hmm, we're going to change the rules on you. And I feel it's a bad idea. And I will leave it at that, and hopefully some of my people that own restaurants and bars can come up and, and give you your feelings on it, but those are mine. And thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Daniel Schwalm. I am the owner of The Lounge. And I've actually had to sit and think about this myself. I'm a new small business owner in town. We are actually just a beer and wine establishment ourselves. The $205,000 set rate at that point, which to my knowledge, I didn't even know anybody had bought one yet. Has anybody ever purchased one?
None have been sold.
I didn't think so. It's just a pretty outrageous amount for someone to try, as a small business owner, to try to actually go out and get themselves just for the liquor license, as well as buying a business, the establishment, the food, the booze, all that stuff. So to me, I think it, it makes sense to lower it. With the 105 or the 100,000, I, I don't know if you should lower it that far. But at the same time, free marketplace on the liquor license that are in town, what do we have, 27, I think I heard Roger say? Out of the 27, how many of them were basically auctioned off? Probably all of them, that would be my guess anyways, because I believe that's how you get them, they auction them, right? It's a highest bid kind of deal. That's why they range from 150 to some people have paid 220,000 for them, something to that effect. Which to me is, that's the public's fault. That's not, that's not anybody else's really fault, that's just, that's the higher value of the market. Whoever wanted to pay the most for it could go and get it. This is a whole different situation, I guess. There are only 27 liquor license you can't get anymore. So for a person like me trying to get a liquor license, you would have to either rent one from somebody that owns one that doesn't have an establishment to put it in, which right now I don't think there is anybody, or someone would have to fail, or burn down, or leave, or something to that effect. So for me, I guess as I look at this, I, I think it's a good idea. I don't think it's going to necessarily drop the value of someone else's liquor license because of the fact that if you do it this way just for the other business owners, like just say, maybe you made a stipulation on it, to where I paid 150,000 for a liquor license, but it's a non-transferable liquor license, I wouldn't be able to sell it to Joe Schmo down the way, I would have to keep it until I decided to go out of business. I could sell it back to you for the same exact amount that I bought it for, and then you guys ended up being able to sell it to someone else, something to that effect. It wouldn't hurt anybody, and then the value of everybody else's 27 liquor license would stay in the same generality of aspect, would be my guess. For me, I think it's a good idea. I understand that a lot of people have worked a really long time and a really hard time to pay, you know, some of those, I guess you could say, auction prices. That is just the way it's been set. I think it's a great idea, and I think whatever you guys decide will work for the public, I think. I do somewhat agree with Roger on the whole bringing in outside places like Applebee's, things like that, to where they're not providing a lot of the money back into the community, like a small business like Foxy's or The Lounge or Sparky's or any of them places that stay local, do all that stuff like we do, buy all your stuff from here. So I agree with that. Also, agree with the fact that you guys are thinking about changing, I guess. So either way, I, I think it's a good idea, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. I, I would like to clarify that the license that we're talking about selling has some severe restrictions that the 27 do not have. You have to limit alcohol sales to 40 percent. 60 percent or more has to come from food and non-alcoholic beverages, and that has to be reported every year, or the license is lost. That there is no such restriction on the 27 current full unrestricted licenses. So that is a difference, one difference. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Jonathan Anderson. Hi, I'm Jonathan Anderson. I own Woody Sports Bar. I purchased Woody's Sports Bar and the liquor license for around this two hundred thousand price tag about a year ago. And I've been able to operate, anyone else could have bought it at the same time if they wanted to. I think any other new business in town should be able to step up and pay that price as well. So I just want to ask the city council to keep it at the two hundred and five thousand. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Becky Sherrill. I've worked in the bar and industry, restaurant, restaurant industry since I was fourteen years old, part-time. I still work there. I currently bartend at Sparky's, so I'm not an owner of any license, but this does affect me directly. And I feel like the initial proposal was made with good intentions, you know, to probably promote growth within our community. I just don't think it was fully thought through of how this would affect local businesses. And as mentioned before, these people have put an investment into their liquor license. If you want to start a business, they've invested all of their money into it, maybe as opposed to a 401K, they put that money towards liquor license instead. And that investment was made with the knowledge that they were limited for availability. And the money comes back into the community. I mean, you have all of these locally owned businesses and people who have put up that money for that fee, which is nothing for Red Lobster, or Albeck Steakhouse, or another restaurant who would come into the community. And you know, you had mentioned protection earlier, and I just, it made me think of when the liquor stores were protected, when Target and Walmart and other stores wanted to carry liquor in their stores, and it was voted against to protect the local owners of local liquor stores. And I don't, I don't know how you would determine the fair market value after I've discussed it with other owners. You know, I think two hundred and five thousand dollars seems fair, and I'm not even an owner. I just know all the investments that they've made into it. I don't know, I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
Jeff Geiser, Clifford Steakhouse. Again, I just want to confirm that we did make a big investment to purchase the licenses, is that we do have. We pay interest on those licenses because we had to borrow money to buy those licenses. We had to put our earthly possessions on the line, the houses, you know, you name it, whatever you got, you got to put it on the line to get the money from the bank to buy those licenses. And that's the investment that I committed to, to make sure my business succeeded. You make it too easy, you know, you just can't make it too easy. So anyway, there's the cost of the interest on the loan, there's of course our annual fees that we have to pay to the city and the state, you know, you name it, whatever other costs are involved in it, our insurances. There's a lot of overheads that fall into the responsibility of operating a business with a liquor license. And you have to be very responsible and very diligent in what you do for the safety of the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Bill Meyer, co-owner of Willie's Sports Bar in Watertown. Been co-owner since two thousand and ten, and we purchased it with my uncle. I know they purchased the building and the liquor license for a lesser amount because it was a closing business, they were going to be shutting down. We bought my uncle out July first of last year. And when we bought him out, the equivalence of what we paid was around two hundred thousand dollars for a liquor license. And that was just July first. It would have been five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for the, for the property and the license. And the property sits at about, I think, three eighty, three ninety, right in that area. So just last July, we paid for it. We took a loan out on it, just like Jeff said, I'm responsible for that loan. I was totally comfortable paying that amount because I had confidence in working the hours and running the business and doing it, and making the payments on it. And I know I talked to the bank, our personal banker, our business maker, and he said there may be issues that arise, may not be issues that arise, if it goes for a hundred thousand dollars, because that's what was brought up last time. So if it goes down to a hundred thousand dollars, I know it's a different license. I know it has stipulations on it, but there's no way that that is not going to affect the cost of my license, or the worth, I should say, of my license. And there's no way if it drops down that that's not going to affect the collateral that it has or holds at the bank. So that's just one of my concerns, one of my main concerns is the bank. And I guess less than a year ago, we paid that price, knowing that's what it costs to get into the business, the industry. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Jenny Kaczaski from Second Street Station. I emailed the majority of you earlier today, and I guess my concern is nineteen years ago, when my husband and I bought our business, we paid two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for our liquor license. That's when they were at their all-time high. You have the old people like us on this side who've worked our tails off to pay for it, and you have the young people over here on this side that are just beginning. There's no way that they're going to make it if the city brings in these licenses at this cost. I'm just like the rest of you, I would like to have an Olive Garden here, or a Texas Roadhouse, or whatever, at our expense and our disposable any night to eat supper at. But on the other hand, if the general public did realize what we paid for our licenses, I strongly believe that they would back us a little bit more. They're the ones that support our businesses. They don't understand what we paid for it and how hard we work for it. So I really strongly believe you should keep it at the two oh five. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? All right. So we have our input, and I'd like to open this for council discussion. Anybody want to lead that off? Councilman Albertson?
I'll take a whack at it. You know, the more I hear about it, and I appreciate what you said earlier, Mayor, about not stymieing new businesses, but I also look out at these people, and I know that these people have put blood and guts and tears into their businesses. And we do have two more starting up very soon, back with the Goss coming in and North Shore. And that's going to be, hopefully, successful businesses, both of them. And if we do open it up and, and lower the prices, I tend to believe that what they're saying is going to make a huge difference to their businesses. And I don't know if there are a whole bunch of people waiting for a license. And Dan, I appreciate what you're saying, starting off, and maybe liquor is a big deal for him to have in The Lounge, but I think we really have to watch out for our people.
Thank you. I sent around to the council an idea of offering a graduated fee based upon the size of the dining area for these full-service restaurants, and starting with a very tiny startup, which would be a local, it wouldn't be a franchise. Let them in, let them offer alcohol at a very tiny rate, and if they expand their size, they'll have to come up with the ultimate, I mean, you could set that size whatever you want, but say, you know, less than five hundred square feet, that's, that's a hole in the wall. Somebody starts a business in a closet somewhere, essentially, and their license is twenty-five thousand dollars. But then if they increase their dining area so that they can have more patrons and pay for more of it, then you could have a fee that's higher and get ultimately to that two hundred five for a small franchise, and pick whatever size you think that is as a community, that, I mean, if you want a business to come in, that's one idea. I had a lot of people telling me they wanted to see local businesses, and we want to spur entrepreneurship in our community, and get people who live here the chance to get started. We've seen a lot of restaurants start and close, local little ones, that just can't keep their doors open because they can't sell a mixed drink. And it's, well, I'm not a restaurateur, I know it's really hard, but I don't know what the business is, but I'm guessing if you start out at less than five hundred square feet, you're never going to be rich unless you can expand that footprint. I mean, you can barely even have a kitchen that, you know, to, to make that sixty percent food and non-alcohol, for that small of a place, you're going to have to be cooking a lot of food. And if, if you can't make it, you've, you've lost a twenty-five thousand dollar investment, or whatever, I mean, council could set that. But you're not competing with the big established bars who can sell without restriction, a hundred percent alcohol if they choose. A little restaurant can only sell forty percent of their revenue in booze. The rest of it has to come from food and non-alcohol. So if you give that option for a little place to open up at a very small price, with the intention that if they did expand up, they are going to pay that full two hundred five thousand, or whatever you want to set it at, if they get to the point where they can actually compete with some of these established places. And that's just healthy competition. And, and I know nobody wants competition. It doesn't matter if you're a restaurant or a dress shop. If you're a dress shop, you don't want another dress shop. Of course you don't. If you're a shoe store, you don't want another shoe store, that's natural. And it's just, you know, this isn't something that, and I'm not saying this is the right thing to do, I'm just offering this up as a way that the council could graduate this and, and have that high fee for, maybe it's a thousand square feet, which is still a super tiny business. I don't know, set that at some level which seems reasonable, so that if it starts to compete with a Willie's, which I ate at recently, love it, and, I mean, I try to go out to all of our restaurants in town, and, and I'm not trying to take business away, I just, I have a lot of people telling me our climate here is very difficult. I will add, and you probably know this, but Aberdeen's price is one hundred thousand, and they've only had one sell in ten years. So I mean, if we set it at a hundred thousand, I'm guessing it would be the same thing here. A hundred thousand is a lot for a little tiny hole in the wall, just starting out business. It's nothing for a franchise, but we don't have the population to attract a franchise at this point. This is what we want to encourage would be entrepreneurship, or, you know, somebody who is just trying to get started. And I think that, that's what I heard, is nobody wants to drive our existing bar businesses out. We certainly don't. We want everybody to be healthy. But if we had some options and could at least have a pathway for people to enter the market, they may be buying your license in a few years and moving in when you're ready to retire. Who knows? So that's just my two cents.
Am I able to ask a question here?
Turn on the microphone, please.
Okay. I just have a question, just for my own personal clarification. So I work at Sparky's Bar, and we mainly do liquor. And I'm just wondering if you pass this for a hundred thousand dollars, what's to say that somebody from Foxy's or Willie's won't take their full license and go open a bar, and then buy a hundred thousand dollar license to operate their business?
They certainly could.
So then that would be hurting the bars directly.
Well, hurting, or is free market harmful?
Well, I don't know.
Is that a bad thing?
Not necessarily, but with our population, do we need more bars?
I guess that's a market's decision. And, and that market, I think that the, the bar market would retain its value because that's much more attractive to not have to keep track and report and maintain a sixty to forty percent ratio for food over alcohol, so.
So the answer to my question, if I'm understanding this correctly, is yes, they could go take their full operable license?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, a full, they can sell their license and buy, they've always, they can do that now, but the price is the same. So it might even be higher than market, we don't know market changes. And the market value of a business changes with the time, so.
Right.
We'd have to reestablish that.
But if you set that at a hundred thousand dollars, they could run their current business on the hundred thousand dollar license?
Absolutely. But they'd have to report, and they'd have to maintain a sixty to forty percent ratio of food and non-alcoholic beverages over alcohol beverage.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I was wondering, who monitors that?
Well, that, we would have to, the city would have to do that.
Who, so that's not in place yet, that's something you would have to develop?
Right. But I think that they're probably already having to report for tax purposes. So it would probably be something along those lines.
So how can you guarantee the accuracy of it?
We can't.
Right.
I mean, these people are going to lie. We, I, you know, I'm not going to say people aren't going to lie, and we're, we're going to catch them. I, I don't know, that's, that's not the question for tonight. But this is a question that all communities in South Dakota are facing, because the ten-year period of frozen value started ten years ago, and we're one of the first communities that passed a resolution. And now, so we're the first one that has to address this issue. But there, everyone else is following, and they'll all be having the same packed council chambers when they reevaluate their liquor license price. And why Aberdeen's is less than half of ours is, you know, I don't know. But it's not sold, so I don't know that that's.
It was my understanding that ten years ago, they averaged out the current licenses, what they had been paid to buy those, to determine that fee, and that's how.
They, I don't know that if it was a straight mathematical average, I don't think so.
Okay.
I mean, the attorney and the finance officer can answer that better. Matt, do you want to try?
Yeah, I can certainly try. It was not an average.
Okay.
The statute gave us the ability to gather that information and required that the restaurant owners, the liquor license owners, report that to us. The council at the time set it at the highest dollar amount, and did not take the average.
And that was done the same in all other cities?
They all had that choice.
Aberdeen, Sioux Falls, Rapid, they had the choice to do it in their own method?
I think so.
They had, they had the choice, the minimum was the current fair market value. The minimum was the average, is my understanding. Aberdeen must have chose the average. In my discussions with them, there's thirty licenses in Aberdeen, which is well over the one per thousand amount, similar to us. But they, the market value of the full on-sale license up there is substantially less than ours.
And it's possible the free market has determined that's the number of appropriate number of businesses. I mean, we're not going to get a flood of a hundred businesses if the market will support twenty-seven. We'll open one, one will close, and that's what happens. And if we have a, an available market for something different, and something different comes, it may not even impact what's already there. It, because there are people that might choose to do that. I can see Glenn wiggling.
Actually, I just got a few questions. I'd like to probably direct it towards you, Matt. Explain to us, if we do nothing currently, okay, our two hundred and five thousand, that was a ten-year window that expired a number of months ago, if we do nothing tonight, explain to us all what, what happens going forward at this point then.
Well, before we could sell a license, we would have to set a fee, a new fee. So before we could sell one of these licenses, because the previously set amount is expired, so if somebody came forward tomorrow, asks to buy one for two hundred and five thousand dollars, we would have to set it at two hundred and five again in order to sell it. So that's my recommendation is, is that whether you set it at this, at a lower amount or two oh five.
We need to.
We should pass this resolution tonight, even if it's just keeping it at two oh five, just so we have something on the books.
So we need to do something in case somebody, mom and pop, or a franchise were to come along and want to license, we would need to do something.
That's my recommendation, but that's your, that's your choice.
Okay. I, I think I know the answer, I'll ask the question anyway. Of the twenty-seven current license holders, those are required to be active licenses, right, or operational, whatever the terminology would be. In other words, we don't, we don't have people sitting on licenses that are speculating to trying to sell those at some higher rate. Is that a fair statement?
They have to be active in a two-year period. They have to be active, uh, in a two-year period, they have to be active for 90 days.
Okay.
To remain, to remain, uh, active licenses.
Do, do we have any sense, I guess I'll probably direct this, that, this, the audience, I mean, i- is there a waiting list of people that want licenses or need licenses that, that can't get them because we're, they're, we're limited to the 27? I see most, some, some yes, more no.
That's a different kind of license, though. But he's restricted.
I, I guess I'm just trying to get a handle on what kind of demand there is, is in the marketplace for a, a, additional license of some sort, whether it's restricted or unrestricted. Um, not sure I got a definite answer on that, but, um, also asked a question, because a lot of the comments that we were getting talked about leasing a license, city leasing a license out. And I understand, Matt, because we are a local option community, we cannot do that, do you want to expl-
Because we are not a local option community. So Brookings like commu-, uh, Brook, uh, excuse, uh, excuse me. A community like Brookings is a local option community. That's, uh, a vote of the people is required. Basically, the city owns the only liquor license and they lease out operating agreements. And so, in order for us to do that, we would have to go down a whole other, a whole other path and.
Um, for a waiting list or not a waiting list, or what's going on? I know Harry's just started, Harry's, right downtown, just started serving hard alcohol within the last year. Whether they bought it or they leased it, I don't know. Uh, Dakota Butcher Eastside just started serving alcohol within, I believe, the last six months. Might be within, for sure, the last year. So I, they just did.
Right, you could use, you're Bill Meyer, right?
Bill Meyer with Willie's Sports Bar, sorry. Yeah, yes, and so there's, there's people that are acquiring licenses, there's people that are getting them.
But they're, right, they're, they're getting them on the open market and it's.
They are.
Buying the, the ones that are unrestricted. And they're not buying.
They're still getting them.
The ones that we can sell that are restricted. We've had them for sale for 10 years, we haven't sold a single one.
I understand you haven't sold a single one, but there's been other liquor licenses that have sold.
Right, but they're different. It's not the same thing that.
But they sold.
That, otherwise they would have sold. Unless they're buying them for a lesser price, I don't know what Dakota Butcher paid.
I know, I don't know what they paid, but I know, to answer the first one, there's, there's not a waiting list. There's not a, people are begging to get into it or, or spend the money, whether it's the 100,000 or the 205.
But essentially, somebody has to close in order for someone new to open. Because there's 27 and they all are active.
Right now, I don't, yeah, or sell. Yeah, I don't know who opened or who closed in the last six months. To create two new ones, if they were just stagnant ones that were there, waiting for somebody to pick them up.
Yeah, but they, they can't legally, they have, they have two years, right?
Yeah, two years. Yeah, it's 24 months to sit on a license.
Right.
Not quite, because they have to operate for 90 days. So they can sit on it for quite a while and then lease it to somebody.
Right.
So there's, there's not a waiting list, if there was a waiting list, there would have been a demand for this beforehand. I just think, I don't, I like competition, competition brings out the best in everybody, it really does. But there's no reason that some people should be able to come in for half the price that I did. And do the exact same thing.
Do you think it's worth exactly the same amount? Would you trade yours straight up?
Would I? I would not, uh, maybe, it just depends. We're sit, when we opened up, and Roger brought this up two weeks ago, uh, about when you open up an establishment, it may change for what it is. Not completely, but when we opened up, we were 60% liquor sale, liquor and beer. We were 40%, 38% food in the first year, I believe. Um, in the last four years or so, we've been over 60 or right at 60.
For food?
For food, so it's flip-flopped. And like you said, two weeks ago.
I was thinking your burgers are so delicious.
I appreciate that. If you want to keep them good. We just, I don't know, competition's a good thing. Another example about a liquor license and people failing because they can't sell alcohol is false. Harry's opened up, they did not serve alcohol until the last six months. I'm gonna tell you right now, they put a dent in our business. They did, and good for them, they did a great job with it. But we are now back ahead of where we were before. Competition's a great thing, and they didn't need a liquor license to do it.
Thank you, Jeff, did you want to say something?
Yeah, Jeff from Clifford's, uh, just, you know, talking about being first. You know, when I decided to quit the factory life and start my business in Uptown Watertown, my heart was in it 100% and I bought an old building, I fixed it up. Um, I started out with a beer and wine license in a small space like you're referring to. I worked my tail off, I saved money, I got to know my banker real well, and, and I was able to finance a full liquor license. That is a commitment I made to my business succeeding and I really think the 205 number is absolutely solid and everyone should have to make the same commitment to success. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Danforth?
On one hand, I don't disagree with that. On the other hand, we cannot forget that these are distinctly different licenses. And I'm not in that business, but I will tell you that if I've got 205 for unrestricted or 205 for restricted, I know which one I'm gonna go by. They are not the same license, there are issues and there are much greater risks in there. I don't, I don't believe in the 100,000, okay? But I don't believe in the 205,000 either. Uh, because there is a difference. I think, to me, the very first question that we as a council, we as a community gotta ask ourselves is, do we want any more of these businesses here? Because if we really don't, then this is a moot point, let's, let's kill the whole ordinance and let's not even allow these licenses. Or, if we want to have other business opportunities here, then we've got to try to do it right and we have to try to do it fairly. Now fairly doesn't mean, that's a very vague term, but fair is all things considered. I don't think the 100,000 is fair, I don't think 205 is fair.
Daniel Schwamm.
Roger, if you need, we need to.
Daniel Schwamm from the lounge. Um, I just, I guess I had a question on a couple of stipulations on that liquor license as well. Um, so if per se, I did buy one for 205,000, I had my food sales at 60, 65%, 35% alcohol. By the time five months went by, my liquor sales raised above my food sales because now I'm selling alcohol, I went from 35 to 70% alcohol to, you know, 30% food. Do you guys take the license back then? Do I lose the 105,000 to 205,000 then? You just straight lose the cash?
Yes.
That's an answer I needed.
That tells you what the difference between the two licenses are.
So let's set this price at 100,000.
Roger Meyer.
Roger Meyer. And you sell 15 of them at 1.5 million dollars, where does that money go? Shining one's pockets here, where does it go? Where's it go?
Oh, it goes into our community coffers.
And you do what with it then?
I guess that's up to the council.
Okay, you know, that is a big question to me, it's like, we never talked about the money part. What you're gonna do with it is, that part I don't understand, no one's really had any.
Oh, there, there won't be a problem spending that money. We got plenty of potholes.
You know, I've sat over here and a lot of the statements I'm hearing from out here is like, wow, wow. A little hole in the wall, they can start up for 25,000 because someone thinks it's a good idea? It costs you 205,000 dollars to get in the liquor industry business. And no one up here should be involved in it. It's been set by the state and it's been this way for how many years? And all of a sudden, they put this loophole in this law. And certain people think they should do something about it. And we are the first community. And I think we're gonna set a precedent that is wrong, very wrong. And it's going to hurt our industry, it's gonna devalue our licenses. 27 of us sit right here and have the possibility to lose 2.7 million dollars. They are not the same license, but they compete against you the same way. And we're not thinking of that, we're not thinking of that. You're asking us to take a big hit here. And we should just leave it at 205 and let it go the way it has been. It's not broken and no one here has to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, council? Anybody else want to weigh in? Councilman Danforth?
Is it, Matt, is this a referable item? No matter what we do? If somebody wanted to, whatever the outcome is, they could refer it to a public vote, couldn't they?
I believe the answer is yes.
And leasing we've said is out of the picture.
Correct.
Okay. And Mary, you presented the, the thought of a graduated type of license, which I personally wouldn't be able to decide on that tonight. I mean, I, I would need to spend a lot more time in looking at that. Um, so, I come in here tonight, honestly not feeling like I have all the information that I need to make a decision. If I could, if I could, what I would ask is I would want to have every license holder, I would like to know when you bought your license and how much you bought it for. Because that's the kind of detail that enables me to make a decision. I understand that that's, that's private confidential information, right? I understand that. But without that information, um, at least for me, I'm more apt to make a bad decision without having the detail in front of me. You know, I, I've heard anywhere from 150 to 225. I don't, out of the 27 licenses there, how many, how many of them are at the 150 mark? I don't know that. Those are, that's important detail for us to try to figure out what is fair. Again, if we don't want the, the businesses here, then our vote should be to scrap the ordinance altogether. But if we do, if we have that, that, we want that opportunity. My, my job here, Roger, is not to protect any given industry because if that's the case, then our industrial parks are gonna ask us not to bring people into because it takes workers away from them. Or hotels, we don't need more hotels. I mean, every industry is gonna say, I'm having problems getting people. Don't bring any more people and, any more businesses into town. That's not my job, I, my job is to try to bring businesses into town. Now, I don't believe, anyway, I don't believe we're out soliciting restaurants or bars or such to open up in our community. That, that's pretty much a, a, somebody's gonna decide to do it or they're not. But is there a willingness to show us in a confidential manner when you bought your license and what you paid for that license? Is there a willingness in order for us to get better information? Is there a willingness for the license holders in here to share that confidentially with us? Because that would help me, it really would. Because, again, I want to get to a point that's, that's right and fair. I don't want to restrict business, that's not my job. And, but I want to try to make a, a right decision. So I, I don't even know how many people out here, raise your hand if you represent a license. If, now if there's more than one of you here from a business. Okay, so we've got a dozen of you out there. How many of you would be willing on a confidential basis to, to share, give us documentation that would show us when you bought your license and how much you paid?
Not quite as many hands.
Is there anybody that wouldn't do that, let's do it that way? Because I don't know about the other council members, but I know that would be very, very beneficial to me. And if there is that willingness to do that, my suggestion tonight is, is that we vote to leave it at the 205. We take the time to get that information, we consider other options and to see what makes sense and we come back at this. But I, that's my recommendation, is that we, we make a motion to approve it at the continuation of the 205 and then continue our homework.
Councilwoman Manti?
Actually, I would just like to ask Mike a question, um, clarifying what information you're looking for. Um, are you looking for it in terms of the investment? Um, I mean, I don't disagree with you, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure this out is, the idea of knowing what was paid and what the value is now, is that an idea of looking at how it's raised in value? I, I'm missing.
I didn't ask her what it's, what it's valued at now, because the, the market will figure that out.
Right, right.
I want to know what you paid, when you paid, when you bought it.
Okay, okay.
Those are the two, and it, honestly, the other, only little bit of information, I don't care the name, I'd like to really know whether you bought it directly from the city through a bid process, auction process, or whether you bought it through another license holder. Those are the three bits of information that I would like to have.
Councilwoman Albertson?
Matt, I have a question for you. In Aberdeen, and maybe you don't know the answer to this, Aberdeen has these 100,000 dollar licenses, that's what they paid. Do they have other people, like the folks sitting in the audience here, that are saying, oh my gosh, we paid 200,000 and now Aberdeen changed it to 100,000? Or has 100,000 always been the benchmark for Aberdeen?
My understanding is that the 100,000 has been the benchmark, uh, from the inception of the ordinance. Um, so what, the, the city attorney up there is, is relatively new, so he wasn't around when they did this, but his impression is that the market at the time, um, for on-sale licenses was, was around that 100,000 dollar mark. There's 30, I know that there's 30 regular on-sale licenses in Aberdeen.
Anyone else, Councilwoman Manti?
Um, I just wanted to make a couple of points because this is a difficult decision and it is a difficult, uh, thing that we're dealing with. But a couple of things that have come out from the conversation, um, one of course is the competition part of it, but, um, there always was an adage in development that if there was a successful convenience store in one corner, eventually there would be four successful convenience stores on, on every corner, or on all corners. But I don't know if that's true anymore. Um, I think to Dan's point about losing the license if he switched his, um, food to liquor percentage. Okay, so now that would not happen to an unrestricted license, correct?
Right.
Correct, so a person with the unrestricted license, regardless of what their percentage of food to alcohol is, or whether they sell all alcohol or all food, their decision, they are allowed to maintain and, or they're allowed to keep that license.
They don't have to report that, it's irrelevant.
And they don't have to report any of that. Whereas somebody who buys a restricted license has to not only report their percentage of alcohol and liquor sales, if they should change that percentage, they would be out, purely out that money that they originally invested into that, uh, uh, the restricted license, okay? Um, so I just, I need to make sure that everybody understands that, that there is some significant advantages on that unrestricted license in terms of the reporting, the value of the license, how long you can hold it, if you can hold it. Um, and, and I'm not saying that any of you didn't work hard, but I'm saying that, that a young man like Dan is working hard too. He's, he's purchased a building, a business, he's working at it, he's made another thing available for us downtown. Um, I'm sorry I'm picking on you, Dan, because you just happened to be the one sitting there in front of me. But, um, so, so I'm, I think I see his point, eh, very clearly. He would love to probably get into a different level of his business, but as a startup, there's no way you can afford that 205,000 dollar license, that's risky. I mean, you could potentially lose it, correct? I, I'm, I'm saying something that's correct, right? So, so I think that, you know, if you take all the startup costs, I don't know that a person who had to pay 100 or 150 or whatever that investment was would have any less, I mean, I'm su- I'm sure there's other people who, yeah, they could walk in the door, they could write a check and they could write a check for the building and they could write a check for the license and they could write a check for FFNE and they'd up, up and running. I doubt that that there, person exists here because I've heard how hard all of the rest of you have talked about working on your businesses. So, I think that a person who purchased a restricted license at whatever rate we set it is still going to have to make that investment work. And they're still gonna have to put in the work, they're still going to have to possibly take out a loan. I mean, if they've already, you know, had to take out a loan on the building and a loan on the liquor license and a loan on supplies and FFNE and all those kind of things. Um, I, I guess I, I'm having, you know, um, I don't know what the number is, but I just really see these two things as being very different, as being very different licenses. And, and I understand, you know, that nobody wants to, like, Mike said, you know, nobody wants to see more businesses coming in, but, or you said that, I guess, but that's not always the case. Um, sometimes traffic increased. Sometimes traffic increased, so if we had several more smaller restaurants and, or, and stuff downtown, I think the foot traffic generated downtown would actually be good for everybody. I, I really believe that, that, that there's a, people like to be where other people are. So if there's a lot of things going on in a neighborhood, or in a business district, or entertainment district, more people are going to want to come there, both customers and developers. So I, I don't know what the right price is, but I don't think it should be two hundred and five either. The fact that we haven't sold any at all, I kind of go back to Mike's point. If, if, if that's the case, then, you know, why have it? But I just want to remind people that the person with the unrestricted license does not have to keep track of their sales, does not have to, can keep it for whatever they want, sell it for whatever the market value is. The other one would have to surrender it if it were flopped. And they can't, I, there's a video lottery component to it too, isn't there?
No, let's not go there.
No, I'm not going to go there. I'm just, I was just looking at my notes. I'm just looking at my notes. I'm looking at my notes. But, so, putting that out there for thought, you know, and realizing that not only are we, but all of you are in a difficult situation. I just would, I, I do believe, and I agree with the mayor, that our role is to both support the businesses we have, but to also offer opportunities for other people to develop a business, just like you had that opportunity when you had it. And, and this is a different business. I keep wanting to say that this is a different license, different license than the unrestricted. So, I'm done now.
Okay, thanks, Beth. I have a question for Matt. If we gathered information in a confidential way, we live in a fishbowl here. Isn't that public information?
I would have to do some follow-up research on that. The original information that was provided to us, nowhere in the statute did it say that that information was confidential. If we were to work, because this would be a voluntary providing of information by the, the owners of the licenses. So I would have to research to see if we could keep that confidential.
Generally, we can't do confidential things. Here, we're open, open government. And if you give us information and we use it in a public way to make a decision, it's probably public information.
There are certain exceptions for proprietary information, but I just have to verify that.
Yeah, yeah. I'd, I'd like to know that. And then Bruce, did you want to say something?
I, you know, I don't feel comfortable, I wouldn't feel comfortable tonight to make a decision on a monetary value for one of these things. And, and I think one of the other questions, I think that needs to be answered for us is, what kind of demand would there be? What, what opportunities are out there? If, if, say, we sold one of these for fifty thousand to a hundred thousand, what would be the opportunities for us for development if we sold it between a hundred and two hundred and five thousand dollars? I don't know that. I would like more information, some more, some better ideas to what the development opportunities. Because if they're not there, then to me, that's a moot point. I think, I like Mike's idea of getting a true market value of what these things are worth right now. I think that's good. But I don't think, in my opinion, I don't have enough information tonight. I would definitely like, and I'm not sure exactly where we get that. You know, maybe Chris, maybe somebody else can, can answer to that question. Julie, I don't know. But it would be nice to get some input in that regard before we keep pushing forward with this. Because if we're going to pick a big fight here, or draw a line, or put a number down, we should at least have the information we need before we do that.
Don't just pick it out of the air. Councilman Billhauer?
Matt, the resolution that you drafted for us has the amount blanked, and then said, and said, and said fee shall remain effective until further action by the city council. Can we specify a date in the resolution rather than keeping it open ended like this? What I'd like to do is, I'd like to propose that we keep it at the two hundred and five, but let's, let's put a definite date so we, and then in the meantime, gather the information that we're asking for. And then at that point, it'll force us to make a decision or take action, again, after reviewing the topic. So, so I guess I, I throw out two hundred and five with using July first as a, as an end date on this, and, you know, see where we're at at that point.
Give ourselves an alarm clock.
Exactly.
I like that.
Yeah, that's allowable.
Councilman Danforth?
Couple things. I don't mind having an end date, but to me, it doesn't make sense. Pass the two oh five, and we either work on it or we don't work on it. We either come up with something or we don't. You know, that, that's our effort. We, why not, why put a deadline on it? Because we might sit here three months from now, not ready. Because we don't do that with any other ordinance.
I understand that, but, but Mike, this is too big of a topic to, to let drag on indefinitely, both for those that are in favor one way or the other. That's why I think by putting it in there, it's going to force us to take action one way or the other. Maybe we're not going to be in any better position at that point, Mike. But I, but I'd like to have us use that as an alarm clock, as the mayor refers to it, as, as a point that would force us to address it again.
I, I would like to say too, I, I did receive a lot of input, and it was heavy on both sides. Actually, for those restaurant owners, I have to tell you, it was heavier on the lower the price side than it was on keep it. In fact, almost no one said keep it the same, very few. A few did. Most said lower it. And most, a lot of them said, please don't reveal my name because they're my buddy, they're my client, they're my neighbor, they're, you know, whatever. That you're part of our community, and we, we don't want to hurt your feelings. We love you. We want you to stay in business and continue to thrive. But actually having the ability for someone else to have a chance to do what you do is going to make you tighten your belt a little bit. And I, I know that's uncomfortable, but if you have more restaurants in town, it's harder for the existing restaurants than if you don't. You have to put a little money into your place, make it a little nicer, because you got to work a little harder to keep the same clientele. And I get that hurts. That's what you don't want. It's hard enough as it is, and that probably would tip some over to the point where they can't continue. And I, I get that fear. I don't think the council wants to do that to anybody. So, just so you know, we're trying to be sensitive.
Councilman Danforth?
In regards to the confidentiality aspects of it, if that is a concern, couldn't, couldn't just say, Matt, you be the point guard so to speak here, and somebody comes in with a valid document that shows when it was bought, how much it was paid for, and you just record those two items and not, not the business? I mean, if it's a public document, then don't record the name. Just, you know who's been in there, who hasn't.
Yeah, we could explore that. I mean, the other thing is if they waive that, if anybody's, if nobody's concerned about that not being public, that would be the easiest way, of course, but we can explore the best way to do that.
And I'm sure that those who paid a hefty price would be willing to have that be known that they did, because they have a stake in it. So maybe it wouldn't even matter. Anybody else want to?
I had one, just quick.
Councilman Lallem?
Actually, I'm just going to make a motion that we keep it at two hundred and five thousand dollars, and then bring this up on July fifteenth, which is essentially three months from today. Gives us time to go over and discuss it, get as much information as we can. Mike doesn't like that.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Then we'll have some more discussion. We have a motion from Councilman Lallem, and a second from Councilman Billhauer. Did you want to say something, Bruce?
The only concern with that is we're going to be having an election. You may have completely different, half of these people may not be here and not be a part of this discussion if you wait till the fifteenth. I would do it before the election. Whatever you want to call it.
The last council meeting in July? And, I mean June, I mean June.
June seventeenth, I'll amend my motion to June seventeenth.
There you go, okay.
So we have an amended motion. We have a second on that. Any other discussion? All right. Oh, Councilman Albertson?
Would, would you pursue that, also that idea that you had with the hole in the wall thing? And I, I don't know if it has any credence, but we didn't have much information on that, just so.
I just pulled it out of the air.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. It wasn't based on anything. I, I just heard from a lot of people, they want to be able to spark entrepreneurship in our community. How can we help the little guy who doesn't have a huge capital to get started? And they're, you know, they, that, being able to sell booze, for whatever reason, in our society, matters. It matters. Makes a big difference.
Mayor, I'd like to say something. Let me get a chance.
Oh, is that Brad? Speaking from McCloud. Go ahead, Councilman Thorson.
Okay, my question is, what bank out there would be willing to give a two hundred thousand dollar loan on something that could be gone the next year with one percent?
That's a good point.
I think it needs to be an upfront capital by this person. They will not be able to get a loan for it.
Yes, they can, because there's a couple of banks that have ended up with liquor licenses.
Well, there's a different kind. He's talking about.
Talking with this one?
The restricted license.
Oh, that, that's a, that's a discussion.
It's gone if they failed it.
That's, that's a banking decision.
It's a risky venture. So, all right. Any other discussion on this point? Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
I'm going to call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you. I think we should take a little break and be back in just five minutes while everybody. Mass exodus. All right, we're reading along. Are we back on? Okay. Item number eight is approval of resolution number 19-20 to amend the major street plan to designate 18th Avenue Northeast as a minor collector street, subject to all planning requirements. So, look for a motion, second for approval. By Manti and second by Bueller. And I'll ask Heath to please explain this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am a little bit saddened. I don't have quite the captive audience as we did have, but I'll move forward with this as necessary. So, the city per state statute is required to maintain a, what's called a major street plan. And in that major street plan, our, our major streets and routes are categorized as arterials and collectors and, and classifications of that nature. That major street plan is also adopted into our comprehensive land use plan and becomes part of that document as well. Uh, the comp plan is in the current, uh, process of being updated. And we hope to have that done in the next few months here as far as bringing a final draft forward to the council after going through planning commission readings. All that being said, we've had, been approached by an applicant who wanted us to look at the major street plan classification for 18th Avenue Northeast. And Ray, I've got my map pulled up. Again, just for reference, uh, for those watching online or at home. And this would be from, uh, the highway, Highway 81 East, to the extents of where it dead ends currently, uh, northeast of the middle school. And if I zoom out a little bit, the extension of this roadway would naturally continue further east and to the west and likely have to be modified slightly through this residential area. I'll pull up one more map here quick, please. Sorry for the... This document here shows what our map will actually look like and be amended to. This is 18th Avenue. And, uh, the reason for the application to come forward, they wanted this, uh, 18th Avenue to be identified as a collector route. Uh, they, they have particular, uh, land ownership along this route that they, um, in order to do certain amounts of development on those lots, it, it has to be adjacent to a collector route. Um, now, of course, we wouldn't want to just change the street classification based on that alone, so we did an extensive review of this street, uh, 18th Avenue, and whether it met, met the standard classification, uh, criteria for a collector route. Uh, those criteria are listed in the request for council action. Those are based on common, uh, ASHTO criteria, the American Association of State Transportation Highway, uh, officials, uh, as well as other engineering traffic design criteria. And in reviewing that, uh, staff's review of that, we did agree that yes, 18th Avenue, uh, should be classified as a collector route. And we supported the application from the citizen, uh, the landowner, to the planning commission level. And the planning commission subsequently passed unanimously to make this modification to the major street plan for the city.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions? Councilman Danforth.
So, what does that mean to me if I live up there now? What, what am I gonna see differently? Give me another example of, of a equivalent street in town that... Is 19th a collector?
Uh, 19th is probably a minor arterial, a little bit higher.
So, give me an example of, of another street and then also let me know, what does that mean to me if I'm a property owner, uh, and live along 18th?
Absolutely. Let me just look at... Yeah, that would, uh, that would, I'm assuming classify, if I could pick it out on this map.
This, this won't change what happens in that neighborhood. What's happening in that neighborhood is this is acting like a minor collector already. If it were a new minor collector with no development next to it, we would be restricting access onto it. But like a lot of our collectors in town, they already have driveways on them and we just live with it. But when new development comes, like east and west of there, we would keep that in mind with the plating and we would probably restrict access from driveways.
And I apologize, I don't have a definitive list here in front of me. Um, and I don't know, Brandy, if you have reference to that, but some of the other streets like 11th, um, First Avenue downtown, for example, is probably a collector, I'm assuming. Kemp, for that matter. Those, those streets where you could get from one end to, one end of town to the other with, you know, a few stops here and there, but not...
Oh, it's in our council packet? Yes. Councilman Solom.
Heath, why, if we go back to that map, it shows the road going across there.
This one?
Yep, right, yep, keep going. Why, why wouldn't we just go across and go to the north end of that where there's no development on the other side?
We don't own that land right now?
To the west extension, is that what you're talking?
We don't own the land.
Well, we, we don't have to own the land, but there's...
But I mean, we don't own any of that land.
Wouldn't necessarily put it next to, I mean, that, that can change too.
So, the alignment, um, and I'm sorry, I, I don't have the same... It is the same map. So, are you talking, uh, Councilman Solom, the westward extension of 18th? Where it jogs?
Yeah, where it comes out of, yeah, where it comes from the west, jogs south and cuts across. Why wouldn't we just come straight across the north end of that development?
Yeah, no, that's a good question. Uh, there, there were some roadblocks in the drawing that line on this map, uh, one being the current housing that's in place, uh, is the primary one. And then school district property immediately west of those houses is another, uh, potential roadblock. To run a street through that segment, um, is less than likely than doing some kind of alignment than what's shown on here. These, these, this future route, I would note, is, uh, an idea that's not set in stone. This is something that we, uh, in engineering and planning offices would reference and look at when considering future development. And if there are other alternatives that make more sense at the time, this can be modified and then subsequently approved by the planning commission and council, um, as far as in relation to the road being built during those phases of development or being shown on the preliminary, preliminary plans for those projects, uh, as well.
Is it, that existing street through Northridge there was not designed as a collector route, was it? Is that correct?
It, it meets the, the criteria for being categorized as a collector route. Now, whether they intentionally designed it that way or not, I couldn't...
Northridge was a PUD and all of the streets are narrower than the rest of town.
Right, so that, so really it wasn't designed as a collector route?
But for the neighborhood, it acts as one.
Well, it acts as one, but it doesn't meet the requirements.
And it's, you know, if it looks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's probably a duck. And I, I mean, we can, when we plat, modify a little bit and tweak, exact, the exact position. But the, the main thing is that we have a through, a through route that we keep in mind as we're plating and it gives us a plan to build upon rather than just let development happen haphazardly.
Mayor?
And, oh, yes.
I would just add, I, I've been very critical of the city since I've been on the council with our long-term planning. And this, albeit, albeit a small project, has the hint of some long-term planning here that granted, it acts like a, a collector route with all these driveways on it, at least in the parts that they're going to expand upon, will limit some of that access and will be able to get it to behave more the way we really want it to.
Right, right. I see Todd K., Director of the First District, here.
I'm, I'm sitting here today in front of you as a member of the Watertown Planning Commission.
Oh, okay, yes.
Just to provide a little bit of, um, background, historically in the city of Watertown, we have adopted that major collectors or minor arterials, the 19th Streets, the Third Avenues of the world, those roads that are on section lines, they usually have a larger, uh, right-of-way, accommodate more of that traffic, uh, that we would see. Our general policy is to try to keep minor collectors on the quarter lines, the quarter sections. So, as you see this property, uh, this road going somewhat to the north on the west side, it's getting us closer to that collector line. And some of that has to taking into account some, some geographical areas, some, those types of things. When we take a look, um, on, on, uh, Section 20, excuse me, right here, well, we can see that we have a major drainage area in here. And the placement of a, a, a collector here is probably not, uh, gonna happen in the immediate future. And so, we've also done some preliminary planning of the Oris property, uh, north of 14th Avenue. And so, th- those are some of the things that, uh, the planning commission, uh, looked at when they were, uh, coming forth with a recommendation. I wasn't there as far as the decision-making of that, uh, of that board, but I know Liam was here. So, I'm just gonna...
Liam Colain from the Watertown Plan Commission. It was a unanimous decision and I think there was a fair amount of discussion about the, the drainage area too. And I don't remember if there was gonna have to be one or two crossings if it was up north, something like that, so.
Yep. Thank you. Other questions? No more questions? This was recommended by the plant, by Plan Commission too, so that helps. I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number nine is the first reading of ordinance number 19-03 to amend zoning district boundaries for the west portion of Block 28 Syndicate Edition from R2A Single Family Attached Residential District to R1C Compact Single Family Residential District, subject to our all planning requirements. And this does not require action, so I won't look for a motion, but, um, we'd like to point out that this was recommended by the Plan Commission. And this is the first application for our brand-new affordable housing zone, the R1 compact zone. So, kind of an exciting moment. Are there any questions about this or Heath, did you wanna add to that?
Um, not necessarily, Mayor, unless there were any questions.
Maybe bring up the map of where this is going. It's, it's the former, um...
Is it Garfield Elementary?
Grant, Grant, Grant School.
Get my school names down, yeah?
I was getting Grant and Garfield mixed up. It's half a block, which is the minimum requirement for size.
So, as the mayor indicated, the intention of the applicant in this case was to make utilization of the R1C district. And they incorporated, uh, the former school property, which is privately owned now, I believe, uh, into their rezone, um, for a couple of different reasons. Uh, it fit the, the current school building, um, fit that zone well. And the intentions to build out the lots north of that school building are, uh, better accomplished by utilization of the R1C zoning district, uh, than what it's currently zoned. In a nutshell, that's, that's what this is before the council for. And this one was passed unanimously as well at the planning commission level.
And the, the owner that's, um, moving this forward intends to do affordable housing, is that correct? Yep, so, yes, Councilman Roby.
Just a question, uh, when you, it's good to see this new zoning, uh, being implemented. The question though is, what happens to parking, on-street parking? What are those considerations? How'd they map out here?
That's a good question, Councilman Roby. And I'll defer to Brandy, our urban planner, and she can help address those as well.
Thank you, Heath. So, when we created this district, we did consider all of that. So, we actually have, um, restrictions on driveway widths to make sure that there is 20 feet of contiguous curbing to still accommodate the, um, on-street parking. And so, if they, it's limited to 12 feet unless they can show that they can, um, have 20 feet of the contiguous curbing. If they, if they have more space, then they can have a wider driveway. But just to ensure that they'll have that 20 feet.
So, in other words, if you put a driveway right in the middle of a 50-foot lot, you would not have 20 feet on either side of it. And so, there would be no parking on the street. That's why that requirement's in there, 'cause these are narrow lots.
Yep, they're the 50 feet instead of the normal 75 that we would see. And so, they're going to develop on Lot A and C, they'll, those will be single-family homes, and then on Lot B will be a duplex.
Councilman Lawl.
Brandy, have they given you any indication on the size of the home or anything along those natures?
I believe around 1,200 square feet. And so, they also have to make sure that they're not creating more than 55% of impervious surfaces on that lot, including the driveway or patios or all of that, so...
So, you're not taking the full lot for a home or home and garage type of deal on driveway? So, they actually have some yard?
Yep.
I mean, we're attempting to try to get these as family homes, correct, or...
Yes, yep. If they... Oh, go ahead.
Uh, Council, to Councilman Lawl's question on the square footage, it is on one of the exhibits, uh, 5,300 square feet for one of the units, uh, 5,100 for a second unit, and then the, uh, duplex at 10,200 square feet.
That's the lot.
That includes the house and garage or...
That, that's the lot size.
It is, I apologize.
That's the buildable size?
So, the lot size. And then down on that second sheet is where it shows...
All the setbacks?
Um, yep, with the setbacks, but it actually does not show the square footage of allowable, um, buildable area.
Should be 38 by 58 for like Lot C?
Yes.
And it gives some ideals of what, uh, the applicant can work within based on...
Okay.
Those requirements.
And so, they don't have to, I mean, they most likely won't build out to the extents of those setbacks. Um, but so also to bring up the point of the, the 5,300 or 5388, so the minimum is 5,000 square feet. Which in the R2A, which it is existing as, it's 6,000 square feet.
So, that Lot B, are, are they gonna have two driveway on one-on-one, ones on the street, ones on the avenue?
Yes, yep.
Any other questions? Thank you, Brandy. All right, item 10 is the first reading of ordinance number 19-04 to amend Sections 21.2602 and 21.2802, allowing recreational use as a permitted use within the C2 Local Commercial District and C through, C3 Highway Commercial District, subject to planning requirement, all planning requirements. And again, this is a first reading, no actions required, but I'll let Heath elaborate on what this is.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This particular item, um, has, has come to staff's attention through discussions of current recreational uses throughout the community and, and looking at how we define recreational use and where that can be utilized, realizing that our zoning ordinance is fairly limited in respect to that particular use. And what we've done is, uh, through Brandy, through the urban planner, uh, she's done some research, uh, and, you know, just applied some planning common sense to the matter too, as, as far as that goes, but looked at expanding our current zoning ordinance to include the C2 and C3, uh, commercial districts as to be, uh, allowable zoning districts for recreational use. Uh, currently recreational use is only allowed as a conditional use in the C1 zoning district. This will expand that use, uh, unconditionally to the C2 and C3, uh, commercial districts as well. This, uh, was a split vote with the planning commission. I remember the exact numbers of five to one or, uh, I think it was five to one, if I remember right.
Heath, can you explain what the recreational, an example of that would be?
Absolutely. That could be the, uh, a fitness center is one primary example that comes to mind. The, uh, Brandy's got this definition memorized a lot better than I do and she can maybe ramble off a few more examples, but things of that nature, recreational use. Uh, other things like, uh, some of the public parks and, uh, recreational uses of that nature can fall under this category as well. Uh, but some of the other private uses, Brandy, do you have a list that you could share?
Um, well, it could be like Heath had mentioned, like a wellness center. One that is particularly applicable to this is like Planet Fitness, and that's in a C3 zone. So, that would make that a, a permitted use. Um, otherwise, like soccer fields, baseball fields, um, your residential park. And we also have acknowledged the fact that we probably should look into this a little deeper even to differentiate between public and private uses, um, because it's a little loose.
Councilman Vilhar?
If I'm not mistaken, the, the one vote that was against had to do with concern...
If I'm not mistaken, the one vote that was against had to do with concerns about there would be a few areas around the lake where this would then be allowed. Any comments either by a couple of commissioners that are here, or Brandy, or Heath, to that effect?
Yeah, that's correct, Councilman Vilhauer, that the primary concern was that the current C2 or C3 zoning districts adjacent to the lake and the areas, because that district is so minimal around the lake, wanting it to be preserved for certain other commercial uses other than what's defined as recreational use, I think was one of the concerns of the planning commissioners. And that discussion led down the road of our future intentions of addressing some of the lake zoning with a lake district, an overlay district, that would help address some of these types of concerns, as well as a litany of other concerns that have come up over the years with the lake zoning districts and how they're managed and how there's a certain level of uniqueness to the lake and the properties around that lake that don't quite fit the mold of our otherwise regulated zoning districts throughout the rest of the city. And Brandy or one of the planning commissioners can certainly chime in on that as well.
Just as far as the, looking at a lake district, we've talked about that for, ever since I've been here and well, for sure, ever since I've been here and longer. And so, we're hoping to, that the Lake Canpeska Master Plan will shed some light and then that we can move forward with developing that sort of zoning district, knowing that it's necessary and that it is different than our districts within city, or within, you know, city proper.
Councilman Beeler.
I'm gonna ask a question. Would we, would we consider making a special exception for this? You know, because of instances like that, if it's a special exception, it would just have to, you know, come before the Board of Adjustments for approval. And I would think that would cover it.
Councilman Beeler, if I understand your question correctly, would you, are you suggesting this maybe becomes a conditional use rather than a permitted use?
He's wrong, terminal. I was only on that thing for 20 years.
Oh, no, 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 I just wanted to make sure that's...
But, yes, exactly.
Okay.
Because we've run into these situations before, you know, where we've had areas that you just couldn't put it in, and it didn't make sense, so you'd have to apply for that, get a variance.
Absolutely. And that option was discussed at length at the Planning Commission as well. And of course, the planning commissioners could chime on this also. But, the discussion led towards wanting to streamline, you know, the 98% of these districts to where we think it's an approved, approvable use without conditional or exceptions. Is where the discussion really led to, is not wanting to bring the 98% forward to the BOA for a conditional use permit because of the 2% that's out there that we may want that for.
How often would we anticipate getting a request like that?
More than one is too many.
And you are?
Todd Case, Watertown Planning Commissioner. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment has taken the general approach over the course of the last year that we want to limit the number of Board of Adjustment actions that are consistently approved on a regular basis. Why create work when we don't need to create work? Make it cumbersome for individuals that want to do business in this community. So, that's been our approach. This idea here of having three or four C2 areas currently zoned around the lake, inside of a year, there won't be any C2 areas zoned around the lake because we will be developing and proposing a new lake district that will allow and take these things into consideration. So, I don't want you all to hang up, get hung up on three properties when we're really trying to streamline an entire process that's gonna move the community forward.
Those are pretty strong words, Todd.
So, you want to keep it simple? Okay.
Any other questions? All right, no action. Oh, did you want to say something, Brandy?
I would just add that I pulled this up here of like what the permitted uses are currently in the C2 district. So, you know, right now, we'll allow an automobile parking lot, a bank, neighborhood retail establishment, service establishment, public utilities, and office. And then the C3, it's, you know, those things and then add a few additional things. But, to think about if that, if those are more obtrusive uses than a recreational use is kind of where we try to relate that in.
Right. Thank you. Okay, item 11 is authorization for the mayor to sign Prairie Lakes Wellness Center sponsorship agreement with Active Heating, Inc. I'll look for a motion, second for approval. By Vilhauer, second by Beeler, and I would like Matt to explain this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll just touch on a couple of the high points. And then I know Councilman Vilhauer's been intimately involved in this matter, so I'll let him chime in as he deems appropriate. So, this is, basically, this is the last of the sponsorship agreements that Ryan Query was working on, and it carried over until now. This agreement would be a 10-year term, $15,500 provided to the city per year. And in exchange, Active Heating will have signage in the, above the concession area in the Park and Rec Gym. The Park and Rec Gym will essentially be renamed the Active Heating Sports Zone at Prairie Lakes Wellness Center. And there'll be signage to that effect as well. And there'll also be signage on each of the four scoreboards in the gym. And if you're interested in seeing the mockups of that signage, it's on the council agenda, or it's in the council agenda.
Yeah, keep going, Ray.
What's that?
Ray's...
Oh, okay.
Going through.
And otherwise, I would let Councilman Vilhauer chime in.
Not a whole lot more to add to that, what you said, Matt. I gotta give Ryan Query credit for this. He really went to bat for Active Heating on this, even beyond the term of his contract, which ended last fall. And the last month or so was kind of turned over to me. Has gotten Prairie Lakes' approval. A number of us in the council have also weighed in on this as far as looking at the agreement and the signage. I think the signage, especially in the, if you keep scrolling a little more yet, get the scoreboards. I really like the scoreboard signage. There's four different scoreboards, and each have a different, this one says determination. Really look neat in my opinion. So, anyway, not much more to say there. I think they're gonna be an excellent partner with us and very supportive of the Wellness Center, working with Dustin Flat and that Active Heating. So, I guess I would hope that we can move this forward.
Thank you. I really like the signs too. I think they are awesome, and they'll be like artwork. So, any questions or comments from the council? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item 12 is authorization for the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with Mead and Hunt, Inc. for the Watertown Regional Airport Terminal Project. And I'll look for a motion, second for approval.
So, I'm over.
Albertson, motion, and second by Lalum. Heath, did you want to talk about, just let Todd, all right, airport manager, Todd Siree's gonna tell us about this.
Good evening. Thank you. So, this is the agreement for the whirlwind effect we went through last year for the supplemental funding. We are still trying for that. We have not heard a determination on the second round yet. Hopefully, in a couple of weeks here, we hear if we got funding for the terminal or not. If we do not have funding, we will apply next year again with the FAA reauthorization bill. There's a $1 billion supplemental program the next four years. So, with that said, in '21, '22, '23, we do have it in the CIP for the federal dollars scheduled. So, this money is not wasted. This is reimbursable at the 95 and 5%. So, this work has been completed already to get done for the supplemental program application deadline.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Danforth.
What do we actually get for our money on this deal? What's the actual...
This is the concept budget report. So, this, the four options that we came up with, or Mead Hunt came up with, the location, the dollar amount, the square footage that we need in them peak time hours when we actually have flights on the ground, that's what this study did, was tell us how big the building needed to be, how many square feet we had to have for the flights we have currently.
Other questions, comments? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item, did you want to ask Todd something?
No, I should. Thanks, Todd.
Oh, okay. Item number 13 is authorization for the mayor to sign an addendum to 2015 Coho, Inc. Development Agreement, providing a reduction for economic development purposes of amounts owed to the city. I'll look for a motion, second for approval. By Beuler, second by Danforth. Coho signed a development agreement with the city in 2015, and today Coho does not feel obligated to comply with its terms because they say Mayor Thorson told them they didn't have to. And they think they had every right to believe that to be true because it was spoken by the mayor himself. And the council concedes, there was an oral agreement between Mayor Thorson and Coho four years ago, and they feel duty-bound to honor that. The correct and transparent way to modify a development agreement, however, is not to simply ignore it, but to amend it, just as we've proposed by this agenda item. And so, I think agreement should be in writing. Here it is on the agenda. This was an economic development issue, and this should resolve it. So, Matt, do you want to add anything to that?
Mary, you took the words out of my mouth. The agreement is pretty short and sweet. There's four recitals that just kind of outline what occurred, as well as two provisions that modify slightly two provisions in the original agreement that reduce the number that Coho owes the city.
Are there any questions?
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Is it really credible that this development company was so unsophisticated and so unrepresented by legal counsel that they believed an oral assurance from a mayor would amend a written contract? I would venture to say that most first-year law students would know better than that, and I find it a little incredible. And I appreciate folks maybe feeling duty-bound, but I doubt that that was, I mean, I don't know Coho, but tell me about the development company that really thinks that business is done like that. I think somebody's pulling some wool over somebody's eyes, not to suggest that, you know, that you shouldn't be able to trust the word of a mayor. But, by the same token, he presumably was not authorized to make that. I find it kind of hard to believe that these people operate without legal counsel. And it also is incredible to me to imagine that anybody's attorney would have told them, "That's fine. Just rely on it. We don't need to get an amendment to the contract." So, before we rush to, what did you say, 300,000? To, you know, to give up $300,000 of taxpayers' money, I'd like to know a little bit more about, you know, why in the world these, you folks think that this company was reasonably entitled to rely on that? It should, in my opinion, have been clearly something you would not rely on.
If anyone would like to respond to that?
I'm in the same boat as a planning commissioner and also as a citizen of the city of Watertown, trying to understand, is this something that's been discussed and decided in executive session in coming out and doing this, or is this something that's been, how did we get to this point? That's something I'm just curious about.
Who wants to answer that question? I wasn't here four years ago in this seat, and so, I think it should be somebody who was.
I also remember that when this whole situation with Coho Development started years and years ago, prior to this issue, there was agreements in place that Coho was going to be paying for a significant portion of the first debt of the Willow Creek Drive. And then that was forgiven by the city. So, the city has already granted several chunks of change back to a private developer. And in that same part of time, we haven't seen a real significant amount of development happen on the Coho property since then. So, why are we incentivizing development that's not occurring? Those are just my questions.
Councilman Robey.
I'll just make a comment. I don't disagree with what I just heard. I and others on this council had complained in the past about documenting things after the fact. And I think if you go back and you watch some of the past council meetings, you'll hear some of those comments. And I think that that practice has certainly decreased in the last couple of years. So, I would just say, I'm not happy with how this rolled out, but under the circumstances, there were some discussions that were made and some commitments that were made. The biggest concern I have is when something like this happens, when a deal gets made without a vote, that usurps the authority of the council. And to me, that is the most disturbing thing about that.
Don, Nancy Turbach Barry, it also usurps the power of the people. I mean, that's really why this stinks. And this kind of business of somebody getting too big for his britches and making promises that he had no authority to make is not something that the taxpayers of Watertown should pay for. You know, obviously, I haven't, you know, I haven't been involved in the legality of this at all, but I have done litigation for well over 30 years. And as I said, I think most attorneys would know that it's pretty hard to modify a written agreement, and especially one that involves real estate by an oral assurance. So, it seems to me like maybe the council should say to this company, "We're so sorry that you were, that you apparently believed something that you should not have believed, but that is not our problem. And if they want to make a claim against whoever made the assurances, go ahead and make a claim against him or them. But, the people of Watertown, we shouldn't be paying for this." It wasn't, it was not approved. It was completely not done by an open government process. And to reinforce it, that it's okay by paying it, I just think is outrageous. Surely, there's something we can do better with $300,000 for our community.
I'll take a shot at it.
Councilman Albertson.
You know, I think that what has happened is that when we talked as a council, we did talk about the importance of getting businesses in here, and we talked about there are some things we can do. And we did talk about that. And I think Mayor Thorson did have the idea that he was going to go out and try to work a deal. I think what didn't happen is that he didn't come back and really inform us as to what it was so we could have the final say on it.
Then it wasn't a new deal, Dan.
Yeah.
That's the way deals work.
There, I will say, there were more than just Mayor Thorson, several council members. Many of us that were on here were in agreement with him on that.
All right, then, John, you also should have known better. I mean, the people of Watertown deserve to have their business done in the open and according to law, not according to winks and shake hands and understandings. And I don't care if it was Mayor Thorson alone or Mayor Thorson and two or three council members. That is not the way our government should work. And I believe that the council of all people should know that your power shouldn't be usurped that way.
Mayor Thorson was given a consent, so to speak, an approval by the council to go see, and he had an up to so many dollars to put towards this project. Is that correct? I'm sorry?
Is that in the minutes, Mike? I mean, is that documented in the minutes?
You should speak into the microphone, please.
Todd, I believe that was...
That's not even the reason I was here tonight, but I'm just wondering, is that documented somewhere in the minutes that the council, there was council action granting the executive, the ability to negotiate up to a benchmark?
I would just chime in real quick if I could. I mean, we are given the explicit right as a, not we, this council, this body is given the explicit right to discuss contractual matters in executive session by state law. the explicit right to discuss contractual matters in executive session by state law.
This, this is what should have happened four years ago, is this agreement should have been out in the public, the council saying, "We did this because we thought this was going to spur economic development," and look your citizens in the eye and say, "We think this is a good idea."
So again, as far as executive session and being able to give directions, doesn't that, doesn't that any action that comes out have to be disclosed?
Only when you take action, and...
Todd, the problem is, is that it didn't get back to the council. There was...
I understand.
If that makes sense, is that the, we had an original agreement in place, which is the development agreement, and the, the issue with Hobby Lobby and the, and the land costs, Hobby Lobby was not going to, they were not going to acquire the land at that rate. So in order to try to salvage that, the mayor was given A-level, I believe it was up to three hundred thousand, I think is what the number was, is that correct? To, as a, as a possible contribution by the city on, for the development of that area in order to make that happen. That, what didn't happen is it didn't get brought back to the council to be blessed. So the question then becomes as a, is, do we go back on our word because an error was made? Because that's really what, what happened. And I, I agree with Don, but by the same token, the mayor was sent off with, with inability to go up to a certain amount in regards to an expenditure on the city's behalf. So...
And Mike, was that by a formal action by a majority of the council? Informal action?
That was done in executive session as far as what he would be able to do in the contract negotiations.
I understand it was in executive session. My question was, was it by formal action by a majority of the council?
Is this a trial?
It, it's an open meeting in a, of, of democracy. I'm just wondering.
Okay, but I'm not sure what, we can't vote in executive session.
So, all right, then, was it by, did the majority of the council members in executive session agree to this? I mean, if this is where the, where the authority goes back to, I guess I'd just like to know, was it a couple of people that thought it, or the majority of the council? If, if that's where supposedly the legally binding action took place...
No.
There must have been...
It's not legally binding. The legally binding action is taking place potentially tonight.
Right, okay, I think that's good to clarify because...
Legally binding action never occurred.
Exactly, that was exact...
That's the problem.
Exactly.
That's what occurred, and so now we're sitting here, the, the developer did what they thought in good faith, based on what was communicated to them. And so, we're put in a position to, we could take the stance that you suggested, to simply say, "Tough luck." That, that's probably the right way to do if you're going to just purely look at it from a legal standpoint, but I sure as hell wouldn't want to be a developer and look anybody in the face and take their word for anything at all, if that's what's going to happen, knowing that it's a technicality as to why the ball got dropped.
Well, we could, we could argue whether it's technicality or not. Is this, to your knowledge, the first and the last of an instance where this sort of thing has happened by, by someone unofficially making an offer and binding the city?
I can't tell you whether it's the first or the last, I don't know that.
We, we resolved several others already that were just like very similar to this through much agony on the council's part for having to actually do this in the broad daylight.
Yeah, no, and I, and I don't, I realize it's not necessarily this council's part, I don't know who was involved in it behind the scenes, but this is just clearly not a good way to do government.
You have to also realize, oh, and Todd, Todd knows that too, when you get into economic development discussions, there's a lot of things that have to go on behind the scenes before you actually, there's negotiating and stuff like that. That is pretty common. Todd knows that just as well, and you should too.
Sure, you bet it is. And then I also know that when you get to legally binding agreements, you typically do them in the right way. That's...
Yep, and that's...
Especially something of this magnitude.
That's what we're trying to fix right now because it did not get back to us after that.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Just as one of the administrators of these agreements, along with my colleagues to my left here, I think that, I would just like to commend the council for the action and moving forward in a direction that does solidify these measures. I think that in moving forward, I can speak for myself, and I think my colleagues to my left, that knowing the importance of these amendments and the impact on them, and how critical it is to get them in writing and modified, is definitely something that will be on our radar to bring forth to this council at any time when we are brought aware of any such amendments that are being proposed to us by the developers. I just wanted to state that for the record, and also commend the council for taking a step in wrapping up these loose strings that have hung out for so long on this particular development. I do think, right, wrong, or otherwise, with the handshake agreements or verbal discussions that were had, this is the right way to solidify it by taking formal action, by way of amending it, if that's the council's choosing to honor what was verbally committed to years ago.
I would like to add that I've asked the council to join together with me in committing to transparency in government, and I've set forth five things that we'll do together for the community as your representatives, and they are, one, clearly state in every development agreement from here on out that no modification of or relief from obligations within that development agreement, which is a contract, can be made except by council authorization. So there's no mistaking that in the future. Two, any obligation of taxpayer funds, which I offer in any of these deals going forward, as I am involved in those kinds of deals, I will tell the people with whom I'm dealing that it's not a deal till the council has acted upon it in a public meeting such as this. Three, the city council members must strive to see that all dealings by the city are done in a manner that protects and favors public welfare. If that also favors private welfare, good, we want private welfare too, but our number one priority is public welfare. We are public representatives. Four, council members must ask questions and promote honesty and transparency in city government. Don't sit back and wait for it. And finally, five, I will support any proposed changes to our ordinances that the council believes are necessary to clarify the responsibilities of the mayor, the city council, and the staff, because it seems to me, we've had a lot of confusion in years past, and as a former staff member of the city of Watertown, I was deeply frustrated and disturbed by that confusion. If there's confusion, let's iron it out. From this point going forward, I will support any change you think is needed for us to be able to go forward with confidence. So with that, I, I understand that this isn't comfortable for anybody, but this had to happen. This had to happen because right now, development cannot occur. We're done until this is resolved in that particular neighborhood because this, there is an agreement signed and recorded at the courthouse that says no building permits until these payments are made, and the landowner feels he shouldn't have to make those payments because he was told by the mayor he didn't have to. So this is how we resolve that. Councilman Danforth?
I'd like to get your interpretation of what was not done in, in a transparent manner. I take offense to that because it's no different, Mayor, than it's...
It's not you.
Mayor, it's no different than the discussions that this body has had with trying to retain Terrex in this community. It's no different. There are discussions that take place, that are done in executive session, that are part of negotiations, and that is not a matter, if that's the case, then that's not transparent.
No, that's not at all what I'm saying. No, once those negotiations are made, like tonight...
It's not my job to make sure that when we have an agreement, that the agreement gets, gets created and signed as a council member. We have staff that are intended to do that. We have mayors that are intended to do that.
I'm only asking you to do your part. I'm not asking you to do all of it.
And we are doing our part, but I take offense to you to give any assumption that this was not done in a transparent manner. I think it's BS.
Okay, and I'm not blaming you.
Well...
I know that it's four years have passed...
No, damn, there is shit like this that makes me decide why I'm not running again.
It's four years since this deal was made. Why has it not come forward for ratification until four years have passed? That's not okay.
Mayor, you've known about it for two years. You tell me why.
Hey, we've been agonizing over this, haven't we?
Tell me why you didn't push this two years ago when you first got here.
I did, two years ago, I brought a forward, and the idea of bringing this resolution...
Where are we at? We're two years later, trying to figure it out.
We've spent hours in executive session agonizing over how to resolve this issue. It's, it's a point of contention, and I don't fault the council for...
It doesn't sound like it.
I'm, okay, well, think what you want. I, I just want to say to the council...
Call the question.
That this, this needs to be, from this point forward, we follow through and we do things in the way that the law prescribes, and that's, that's what I insist upon, and I hope you're...
It will come out with all arguments against 501(c)s and be public with them. Is that the deal?
I'm saying, when the public, public tax dollars are spent by this body, that we follow our regulations and we ratify agreements in a public setting as prescribed by law, and we don't wait four years for it to happen.
Boys and girls, call fuck.
No, I, I would like to make a comment.
Councilman Bueller?
You know, this, you said there were several other issues. I'd like, I'd like for you to point some of those out. I can tell you, I worked with all these folks for a long time. There's, there was never the spirit and the intent of making shady deals on the outside. We, we tried to work something out that we felt was the right thing to do, and I don't know how much I should be talking about executive session, that's probably why I didn't chime in earlier, but we did make, this council, with the exception of a couple of us, made an agreement that we would go up to a certain amount to help that industrial action, that industrial development action. There was nobody here, and there's never been anybody here, that were trying to do shady deals, and that's what we're painting a picture of here. That's ridiculous. This is, there's an honorable bunch of people that worked on this project. What, what benefit is us? We're trying to develop the community. These are things that we did to help foster that growth. It was nothing shady, and I will say, okay, it did go to Steve. Okay, we said, "Steve, you have the latitude to look at this, make some suggestions," and I will say that that was a transition at that time with Stanton Fox, and as we know, there were some issues at that time. So maybe those contracts didn't get translated, maybe they didn't get drawn up, but I'm here to tell you that, and I'm offended by that as well, and if you're going to accuse us of several other things, I want to know what they were. I would like you to spell those out for us.
Okay, I'm...
Because nobody here's been involved with that type of thing.
I'm not saying that the council has been aware of these things. I, these things have occurred at the staff level with a different executive in this chair, and I can tell you, one of the other things that we've passed recently was a development where, having to do with drainage things that weren't done, and we met and we resolved that in this room a few months ago, and prior to that, we spent hours and hours in mediation before bringing an agreement forward in a public setting and voting on it and passing it. All of these things are done with a good heart for economic development, and I understand that, but there, there's a right way and a wrong way to do it, and you don't pressure the staff...
Mayor, yes, for example, not, not the six of us, though.
I've given you examples. Okay, do you want me to, to embarrass somebody?
Mayor, I've been involved since you've been mayor in one item, and that was a communication that occurred between then-city engineer and the developer.
The council was not involved in that.
What's that?
You guys were not involved in the pressure to change what was approved by the planning commission.
Go back and read the four or five points that we need to do, and how many of those say, "The council, the council, the council"? I'm sorry, maybe my, I'm a little too sensitive to this, but that leads me to believe that, "Council, you didn't do this before. Council, you haven't done this before. Council, council." And I take, I take offense to that. I take offense to it that there are, I work with all these individuals for a long time, and I've worked with staff for a long time around here, and I know that errors occur at times. Okay, I can't, I can't help an interpretation, but I also can't help that a document didn't come back. I'm not writing all this stuff down and then following up saying that, "Where are we at on that contract?" That's not my job. That's a mayor's job, and that's the administration's job.
Right, right, I agree, but I think what I'm saying is, when Hobby Lobby came, there was an announcement made, and the town was thrilled that Hobby Lobby was coming. There were probably other property owners who had wished Hobby Lobby had gone on their land, but the town was happy, and the council knew there was something in the works that made that happen. Weren't you expecting that development agreement that you approved had just been signed with less than a year had passed with an obligation? I don't know if you even knew that was how the three hundred thousand dollar grant. I'm not blaming you for that, but how, how does it, we have to work together. It isn't just the mayor, it isn't just the council, it isn't just the staff. We as a community should be looking out for the public. Number one, public welfare, that's what we do, and we all have a part in it, to work together to see that it's done appropriately. Everybody has a piece in that. It's not all any one person's fault. And the, the deals that went down, I, I knew about this one as a staff member, made me sick.
Why didn't you make sure that the documents...
I don't blame you, I have never blamed the council on this.
Aren't the development agreements ran through engineering and through...
Yes.
Then why didn't you make sure it got done?
I tried to, I was not in charge.
The development agreement that we were talking about?
I got, okay, I...
I'm going to sit here and argue with it because I am terribly offended to what you're, the, the approach that you have taken in this, in, in what it feels like.
Well, I'm sorry you feel that way. I've, I've gone to great lengths to stick up for the council in this because...
You trust me.
Steve, do not ask me that in a public setting.
I'm asking if you trust me.
Why are you asking me that? That's not fair.
I think you know, don't you?
Councilman Robey?
Well, I think we should lower the temperature a little bit, everybody. Here's what I will say. The proper procedures weren't followed. I don't think anybody up here did anything ill-intentioned. I, I, I agree with those comments, nobody had that, but the reason why there's a kick in my stomach is it happened on my watch. Now, there's certain things you don't know, certain things you should know, certain things you can't find out. I, I think what we're doing tonight is trying to put a period in the end of this sentence with the commitment that we all are committed to following the proper procedures going forward, and I, you know, I, I don't think that the city got anything of a raw deal per se, but the proper procedures weren't followed, and anytime that happens, it casts shadows on this body. That is the issue. We have just got to make a commitment, we follow the proper procedures. I'm not placing blame anywhere in this statement, but if we don't follow them, this is what happens. So I, I know we're all committed to doing that, we've had to clean up a few things as of late, we're getting them cleaned up, and let's just all have the commitment to go forward, that we do follow the procedures so that we do represent the public well.
Thank you, and, and I do stick up for the council. I, I admire you for doing the job that you do, and as well as the staff, and the staff members who are here know that I am completely dedicated to doing the right thing for the public, and I tell them that all the time. If you're not sure what to do, you know, ask some questions, do the right thing, and if there's ever a question about it, you know, your gut will probably tell you, but if it doesn't, reach out and talk to people, because... Because that has not been necessarily the case in the past, but moving forward it is. We have to work together. The city council, the staff and the mayor must work together to serve the public. Because that's why we're here, to serve the public. And I know you want to do that. Every one of you wants to do that. And I think our mayor was trying to do that, too. Our former mayor, who made these deals, thought he was doing the right thing for the community, but he wasn't following our procedures. And now we're in a mess. This is how you resolve the mess. It has to be done in a public setting.
He was sent out with marching orders. Just because our state, our city attorney... I, I don't know.
I don't fault the council, Brad. I'm not faulting you. I'm just asking everyone to, in order to avoid this happening in the future, let's make a commitment to serve the public welfare. That's absolutely why I'm here.
I made that commitment when I took my oath.
Good. And so we're, we're on the same page then. So I'm going to call a question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 14 is authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement with McGrath for the comprehensive compensation and classification study and authorization for the finance office to issue special checks as required by the contract. So look for a motion, second for approval. Moved by Manti, second by Lalum. Kristen, would you please explain this for us?
Thank you. As you all remember, at the last council, we brought before you the results of the RFP for the wage study that we wanted to do. We had it narrowed down to the two different companies and we were given the direction to proceed with McGrath. So we requested them to give us the agreement. Matt has reviewed that agreement. And before you is the agreement to sign with McGrath to do not only the classification compensation, but also to do the job description and organizational structure review. So we will be working with McGrath to do both of these things. And as the mayor stated in the motion, we would request to be able to issue special checks as the contract states. If there's any questions, I can try to answer them. If not, we look forward to getting the wage study going.
Councilman Lalum.
Kristen, what's the exact starting date? Have they given you?
We haven't. Once we get to this point, once the agreement's signed and we start, I'm, it'll start pretty soon because it was actually about a month behind already. So I know they're, they're prepared. I did ask the question to, I know last time the question was posed about, do they do onsite? And they're, within this price, it's for onsite visits to meet with the staff and, and kind of do that. So I think it's about a four-month timeframe to get the major classification compensation part, and then a couple more months to do the job description reviews and all that, so.
Do you know how many people they'll be meeting with? Are they going to try to meet with everybody? Is that their plan?
They haven't given a specific number, but I know they meet not only with the department heads, but also with a few supervisors and then other staff. So they kind of try to, to get everybody's perspective. So I mean, they won't sit down and meet with all 200 of our employees, but no, they do meet with the different levels throughout the different departments.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Madam Mayor, if I may, just for clarity, from a staffing management standpoint, is it the intent to at least have the salary component of the study completed by the budget cycle? And if there are remaining elements, will they then continue on after that?
That's the goal. We hope to kind of have some of the, the wage study, the actual salaries done during the budget process. I can't say if it'll be kind of more at the end, but I know the mayor and I, too, have discussed kind of putting in a little bit of a wiggle room that we kind of anticipate having into the budget. But yes, the wages will probably come first and then more of the job description and organizational structure following.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilman Albertson?
Kristen, are, is this something now that you're going to include Audrey in? Is that going to be a critical element of this or that job? Is it plays out or...
We have a good hand, I mean, the, the good thing about this is we already have job descriptions for all of ours. We are, at this point, are sending those out. Chris and I are getting those out to the departments. We want all the, the departments to review their current job descriptions, look at them for things that they're missing, things that they want to add, things that aren't relevant anymore, so that when it comes time to sit down, they can provide that to McGrath and, and kind of get it started. So I mean, a lot of it is HR and finance, but a lot of it is too for the departments to come forward and, you know, kind of tell what their departments do and where they see some of their job descriptions needing some clarification. So I think this is going to be a city project. It's not just a finance, HR project. Everybody's going to be involved. And that's the hope, is that we get McGrath to really look at the city of Watertown.
Thanks. Other questions or comments? I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item 15 is authorization to prepay a portion of the 2020 annual dues in the amount of $7,200 to First District Association of Local Governments in 2019 in order to facilitate completion of Watertown Area Transit Coordinated Plan. And this did receive recommendation from the committee meeting prior, but we have folks here to give much better detail than I was able to. So I'll look for a motion, second for approval, and then we'll discuss. Motion by Albertson and second by Y. Councilman?
I need to recuse myself from this topic.
Well, good evening. Todd Kayes, Executive Director, the First Planning District here in Watertown. Several months, well, over about six to eight weeks ago, Watertown Transit Authority put out an RFP, Request for Proposal to, for Professional Services to Conduct Was Called a Coordination Plan. Coordination plans is a requirement every five years under the Department of Transportation for the Watertown Transit Authority and other transit authorities in the state to become eligible for a variety of grant dollars for equipment and planning and what have you. The transfer, current coordination plan for Watertown Transit is expiring. Our office, the First Planning District, was asked to submit a bid on that planning process. We did submit a bid for $36,000, of which 80% would be paid for by the South Coast Department of Transportation. That outstanding, outstanding balance of about $7,200 was being in the form of a hard cash match. And I believe in our proposal, we had made the, the pitch that in the event we were selected and we were able to use existing dues that are paid by the city as the hard cash match, that would help the project moving forward. I think we were very competitive and I think that was probably the tipping point in comparison of the couple of the other requests for proposal submittals. So where we're at in the whole process is in the, in order for the First District to do this work on behalf of the Watertown Area Transit, we need to come up with $7,200 hard cash match. Now, every year, for the 26 years that I've been associated with the First Planning District, the city of Watertown has belonged to our organization. And we collect annual dues from the city of Watertown and the other 76 communities and 11 counties across the district. We use those dues as an income stream, sometimes just to keep the lights on, sometimes to leverage it against other state and federal grant opportunities. And, and so it's never earmarked monies generally. But every once in a while, you have an opportunity such as this where we can obtain a large chunk of state or federal dollars to come in to help do a project that's necessary for something that's important to the community such as Watertown Transit. And so what we are making the request today is that next year, you, the city of Watertown would have dues of a little over $10,000 to be paid to the district. I would line item $7,200 of those dues and, and apply them towards this project to be used as the cash match. By doing that, we don't have to keep track of volunteer hours. And, and the Watertown Area Transit doesn't have to come and hit you up or the county for monies to help make that match requirement regardless. Hopefully that explains the request. I'm just betting on the come that I'm asking you to join six months earlier than I normally would.
I have to say, Watertown Area Transit provides such an important service to our community. And thank you for sitting on that board. And it's, you know, we can't do without them. And this is a very small thing for us to do to that good part of our community. And there's, there's really no loss to us at all. This is a win situation for everybody.
Definitely. Well, first off, Randy Tepper, I'm President of the Board of Watertown Area Transit, and thank you guys for letting this come up tonight. I've been on your board for, I think, about 17, 18 years. I've seen a lot of changes over the years. And one of these plans like this is what helps us be efficient in our changes. You know, some of the things that, that we've really seen grow from our last coordination plan is, is medical trips, Medicaid trips. You know, we've, we've identified Saturday services in need. It helps us go out into the community and find out where the need is. The only difference is this time is Todd's going to do most of our work for us. I think we spent about nine months doing it last time. And, and we just feel that with his expertise in a lot of this, one of our fastest growing parts of the transit is, is employment. You know, so we hear every day about economic development, workforce and, and things like that. You'd be surprised in the percentage of employment rights we give every day and it grows every day. So this is one of the things that the coordination plan is very important to.
Thank you, Randy. Council members, any questions or comments?
We certainly appreciate what the transit means to Watertown. I mean, it's, it's growing every year. So thanks to Randy for serving on it for 18 years, because I know you've been an integral part of believing in that for Watertown. So it's a great thing for our city.
And without the transit, I would have had to walk to Prairie Lakes Hospital three times a week in the winter for physical therapy.
One of the things out of our last coordination plan, when you say Prairie Lakes Hospital, I mean, I got to give my hats off to them because they've, they've come on board with the transit. They supply transportation to any medical trip. They pay for it. I don't care if it's a dentist appointment, eye appointment. If you're going to the chiropractor, you don't have to go to Prairie Lakes Hospital. You can go to either clinic. That's been one of those, those things that we've been able to put together and really find a great partner for the community. And, and those things, what's come up with the coordination plan?
And that's really part of the planning process itself, is to find those partners, find those users of the system. Do some, some sort of a gap analysis, find out where we're doing things well, where we're coming up a little bit short. And then try to find strategies that can help us bridge those gaps.
Another thing, we won't be coming to you guys for money for buses this year because we did have, the county was good enough to give us some money, and also we've had some donations from private individuals that, that have really seen, and we've helped them through the years with the transit that really stepped up the plate. So you guys don't have to divvy up this year, so you bet.
That's great. Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? And I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Okay, item number 18, thank you guys. Item number 18 is addition of airport worker position to the budget. And I'll look for a motion, second for approval, and then we'll discuss. Moved by Manti. Second by Lalum. And I see Airport Manager Todd Siree's here. Want to tell us about it?
Sure. So this is a position that would be funded with the new revenue streams that we've had with the PFC charges and the increased revenue at the terminal. So that's how it would get funded.
How confident are you that the entire cost of an extra employee will be covered? Or is it 80%, 50%, 100%?
It should be 100%. If our numbers stay the same as we are. The PFC is obviously a variable number. It's a $3.80 comes back to the city into the airport fund specifically.
Okay.
So if that number, if that number goes down, obviously, it's going to cost us money, but...
Fly ATY.
I do have good news about that, by the way.
Councilman Solomon?
How, how are your hours shifted out there? And how much extra coverage do you have to have to have this additional person?
So this would bring us up to a minimal coverage is essentially what this is. This is the bare minimum to run the airport with the hours that we need for the shift schedules, the, I'm sorry, flight schedules that we have for our, this would give us 4:30 in the morning to 3:30 in the afternoon, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And then Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, same shift, day shift. And we would have a two to one in the morning afternoon shift the same days.
Yeah, for the benefit of the public understanding, we have flights that will be leaving earlier than we were experiencing before. And we have to have staff there earlier than we had to in the past. And that means you're arriving at Denver earlier to make your connections. More flights are available to you. And then coming back, the flights are leaving Denver later, arriving in Watertown later, which means also more connections available to you. But it also means more staff time at the airport. So that's the direct result of the, you know, the good with the bad. But we consciously made some changes in order to offset that. So we should be good.
How difficult will it be to fill that position?
It won't be easy. Nobody likes to work two to one. One of the things, one of the things that we've kicked around interdepartmentally with meetings with my staff was what would entice somebody to work that shift. And shift differential definitely came up. Every other, it seems like, business in town offers a very decent shift differential to do that. So that was one of the things that was kicked around.
Are we offering that?
We are not, at the moment.
Probably something our wage analysis can help us with, is establishing what that should be. Other questions? Councilman Lalum?
So Todd, we're basically just putting this into the budget. Is that for 2019? Is it for 2020? What, what's the plan?
Tomorrow, I hope.
Do we have a dollar amount to it yet or just trying to...
Kristen?
She stands ready to explain.
And I do want just to point a clarification that the motion should be that it's a grade four airport maintenance worker, just so that's on the record. As far as the cost, the total, what we would put into the budget, and this would be for a whole year, but, so it's a little different with it starting later, but that position would be around $59,000. And that is with salary, all the benefits, retirement, health insurance. And we always would budget that a person would take a family health insurance. So just so you kind of have a little bit of an idea, that is what the position would be. So no, it would, what you would essentially be doing is instead of waiting for the budget process, when we normally establish new positions, you would be allowing the airport to have one more position available in that department.
Other questions?
Do we need to amend that motion then to grade four?
Okay. Who made the motion?
A second.
All right. Motion has been amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
And you were going to give us some good news.
Oh, sorry. Completely blanked out there.
We need it.
So after two weeks of operations, we have our first full flight from Watertown Thursday this week. We've actually, it's overbooked. It's at 51. So that's our afternoon flight. We've been doing exceptionally well. We didn't think we'd hit this point for about six months. And United's very happy and SkyWest as well. So great job of the community and great job of the staff that, that put in the effort. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Do they have to sit on the jump seat then? Someone's lap?
On the wing. Okay, is there any old business? Councilman Roby?
Just a reminder, there's a Home Rule Charter presentation tomorrow at 4:00 PM at Lake Area Tech. Four to six educational session. Invite everybody to attend.
And ask questions.
And ask questions. And ask questions. Uh, any other old business?
Here, if, if I may. I was gonna give the council a quick update on, uh, the precipitation we recently had. I've continued to be in discussions with the Corps of Engineers, who helped us out in our flood event here a few weeks ago, along with the mayor, who's been in, in close contact with him as well. Um, of course, this recent snow event is gonna cause a rise in the river elevations again. Um, it is not anticipated to be as significant as it was a few weeks ago, but we do expect to see another rise and a new crest in the river. Uh, according to the current gauging, that, that crest could come, uh, as soon as Friday, maybe into Saturday, uh, late this week. And, uh, we will continue to, uh, watch that, and just, uh, if the Emergency Operations Center were to happen to reconvene again, we, of course, would do that if necessary. But, uh, I just wanted to give a brief update on where things were at right now. It looks like we'll be, uh, okay. And, uh, after this event, uh, when this melt goes through, we will again monitor the situation and see if we're kinda in the clear, so to speak, before we start removal of the temporary huskow baskets that are, uh, strong along the, uh, riverbanks there. So-
Okay, and should add to that, the Lake Compeska Peak is expected to go back to, um, around the previous peak, which was 1722.5-ish this weekend. And, uh, that they're refining that, and they'll give us the word hopefully tomorrow on that. And that's kinda somewhat troublesome. There were some homes with water in them at the lake. So, um, we'll get the word out if we get any different information tomorrow. Hopefully, it won't be worse than that. So, thanks for reminding me of that, Heath. Other old business? Is there any new business?
Um, Mayor, I'd like to say something.
Go ahead, Brad.
Um, with our recent transgressions against executive session, um, I'd like to assume that we can probably talk about problems going on right now with Burton 501 Steve. Um, we'll probably bring it up with a couple council members to bring it forward in the next council meeting, since it's okay to talk about executive session in public now.
I don't think that's what occurred, but, uh, is there any new- Councilman Villhauer, you had new business?
I'd just like to, to give kudos to Utility Department, uh, in light of the storm last week. I mean, you heard any number of power outages around the, the area dealing with because of the storm, and I'm not aware of anything that, uh, that we experienced here in Watertown. So, I think it, uh, hats off to our, our Utilities Department here in Watertown.
Yep, thank you. Other new business? Any liaison member reports? None? I do not believe we have any reason to go back into executive session. So, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Y, second by Lalum.
Brad.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.